This is Sarah Wolf calling to order the virtual May 18th meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee. Welcome to everyone who is joining us tonight and thank you to 1623 Studios for posting the meeting for us. We will begin with public comment. We don't have a ton of public. Shannon wants to make a public comment.
I don't. No, I don't. Annie does.
Oh, okay. It's, I know what it, okay. So if you would like to make a comment, put your name and your town in the chat under Annie's name. Please do not make other comments in the chat. Let's see if there's anybody in there besides Annie.
Sorry.
Seeing no one besides Annie. Is there anyone on the phone who would like to make a comment?
You're mean.
No. Okay, Annie, you may begin.
I know tonight is Shannon's last night as a school committee member, and I just wanted to express to her my thank you from my Essex perspective. You have been a true advocate for kids and your financial experience and acumen has been invaluable to the committee. And to me, I think you have helped me make sense of things and to see things in a different way. You've always represented both towns. I don't feel like you've ever been somebody who just represents Manchester. I think that that's one of the things that I valued about all of us and the way that we work together. And you know, you have a steady hand and a measured approach that is, has been of value to our district and helped us get where we need to be. So you're a good friend and colleague. I know I'm going to continue to see you and I just want to tell you how much I appreciate the years that you've put into this district because it's mattered. So that's all I got to say and I'm going to mute myself.
Thank you, Annie. Right back at you. No, you haven't gotten rid of me, so.
Thank you, Annie. We're going to miss you both really a lot. Okay, so seeing no more public comment, I will begin with the chair's report. So first of all, we would like to thank the voters of Essex for supporting our budget at the town meeting on Saturday. The three and a half percent increase is slightly above the five-year average of 3.17% and slightly below the previous multi-year assumption estimate of 3.7%. We acknowledge that we have a standing request from the Town of Essex to adjust the assessment should we receive state or federal funds that allow us to reduce costs to our member towns. And we look forward to our member towns finding a way to distribute federal funds from both the CARES Act and America Rescue Plan to defray the reserve fund usage we have experienced as a result of COVID. We were surprised to hear some last-minute opposition to this plan from board members as it has been, had been agreed upon in good faith in our collaborative working group. There is perhaps some misunderstanding that we hope to resolve among the Essex Board members regarding the longstanding successful collaborative process. This week I distributed self-evaluation forms to the school committee members. In our committee, we will be reviewing our own governance, operations, member relations, strategic planning, planning and fiscal management, community relations, and the conduct of our meetings. I hope that this systematic self-reflection will help us to set our goals for the next year and improve our performance. I plan to discuss the results of the self-evaluation at our retreat over the summer when we will also have a presentation from Dorothy Presser, our Massachusetts Association of School Committees Field Director. So on a bittersweet note, tonight is Shannon Erdman's last meeting. Shannon has served on the school committee for the last eight years. She spent several of those years leading us as chair of the committee and she was able to work collaboratively with both towns as a member of the finance subcommittee while always advocating for the district guiding principles to ensure best experiences for the children and teachers in the district. Shannon has taken on the role of mentoring new members, including myself, and we feel very lucky to have benefited from her guidance over the years. We thank Shannon for her dedicated service to the school committee. And tonight we welcome our new member Kate Koch-Sonquist. We are delighted to have Kate on the team and look forward to working together. And now we will move on to our student report from Lucas Shan. Lucas, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Awesome.
All right. So just first things first, I just wanted to mention that I think at this point, most of, most of our students are, or have returned to full in-person learning. So you know, that being said, I can definitely foresee the possibility of, you know, the entire student body in the school building by the end of the school year. So aside from that, AP exams started today for students enrolled in the AP curriculum. And so exams will take place for the rest of this week and then throughout next week as well. And then after that, our seniors will officially be done with class by the end of next week. So that's really exciting. And so, yeah, that pretty much wraps it up. I don't have too many dates to share with you guys.
Thank you, Lucas. Does anyone on school committee have a question or comment for Lucas? Well, Lucas, thank you. Oh, Shannon's going to say something.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Lucas for keeping us up to date during this kind of crazy year. It was really, really helpful to have a student's perspective as we were, you know, making all these decisions and moving forward. So it was really great that you were so consistent about dialing in and giving us the scoop and I really appreciate it. So good luck with everything. And keep us posted, okay?
Yeah, definitely.
Or keep them posted.
Yeah, thank you, Lucas. All right, and then moving on to the consent agenda, we have tonight the warrant. We have vouchers number 1045, 1046, and 1047, as well as the minutes from March 16th. I know that Teresa did email some corrections to the minutes. Does anybody, well, first do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
A second, Shannon.
Okay, is there any discussion, any other corrections that we need to know about? Okay, all in favor, we need to go by roll call and I usually write everybody down. Okay, Eric?
Yes.
And then, no, Annie. Okay, Shannon?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, that's it for the consent agenda and we move on to subcommittee reports, starting with facilities. So I guess that would be Shannon.
That would be me because I'm missing Annie, but she's on. So she, and Annie still serves on the committee with me, the school building committee. So if I miss anything, Annie, please do jump in. In this case, I do want a member of the public to jump in and correct me. So we discussed, basically the bottom line is it's still on time, still on budget. We're still looking for a fall of 21 opening. One of the main things we discussed, two kind of main things, we discussed FFNE, which is, oh gosh, furniture, something, and equipment.
Finishes, finishes.
Thank you. Furniture, finishes, finishings, and equipment. So kind of all the fun stuff. We did talk about incorporating a couple of like large pieces of machinery into the, into this project. And those would be kind, the kinds of things that would help extend the life of the building. So it's not just, you know, because we've got a blank check, it's, it's things that we've put some thought into and things that would be used to extend the life of the building and the facilities overall. So we discussed some of those items. And we also discussed the sign that is going to be out front. It seems that there might have been, and correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, there might have been a little confusion at the beginning of the project about signage. And the sign that is going to stand out away from the building closer to the road was not included in the, in the original project. We'd like it to looks very similar to, if not almost identical, to the sign that stands outside of the high school. So we're talking about that in order to put that into the project. I think that's an extra $45,000. So we're just trying to see if maybe there's a way we can source that ourselves and save some costs. So, you know, just kind of these end-of-project things that we're discussing, which is super exciting because it is going to be the end of the project. And if anybody's driven by it, it looks great. We got a little drone video that WT Rich showed us, which was awesome. It really, it really looks like it's coming together and it looks like the building that was designed. So it's really exciting. Is there anything else that I missed? Annie, you want to jump in?
No, I think you covered it all. On time, on budget.
Yep, bottom line.
Excellent, excellent work, everybody. And then next, you can just glide right into the Fin.
Go right, go right into finance. So as you all know, we had the Essex Town Meeting on Saturday where we got some great support from residents in Essex for the school budget. As Sarah alluded to, I think there was some confusion and maybe a misunderstanding as we went into the meeting. As many of you know, we engage in a very open and collaborative process with both member towns throughout the beginning, I mean, throughout the entire year as we go toward budget season, season. And, and that's, so we discuss everything that's going on in both communities, the schools. So there really are no surprises with the budget. We kind of all build it together, though the, the district is building the budget, but kind of with all books open. Everybody comes, you know, with, with, with all the information and, you know, things change throughout the year, especially this year. So this is a very collaborative process. It's been very successful and it's gone on for as long as I've been doing this, eight years. And I think Pam instituted it, so probably about 10 years, and it's worked very well. And I think there was maybe, you know, some dissatisfaction perhaps with the agreement that was struck in good faith at the last minute. And that kind of came to the fore at the town meeting. But we did get very good support and we're going to continue to try to work with all the parties involved to get to a, a good resolution going forward. And we're, I think, very, we're very hopeful that we can continue to collaborate as we have been over the past decade, which has worked very well. So that's about it. We've got the Manchester Town Meeting coming up, I think, June 24th?
21st.
21st, thank you. I knew it was one of those. So June 21st, everybody, please put that on your calendar and attend. I'll be in the cheap seats. So that's about it. We're, we're, we're very, we're very confident that we'll do well in Manchester as well. We've got great support from the Board of Selectmen and from the FinCom. So we've been working very closely with them and we'll continue to do so.
Shannon, just one reminder of the process for me, after hearing, I think the word was intransigence, was used to describe the discussion and that, that the process really began in January of working collaboratively. That collaborative continues year-round, I believe.
Yes, it didn't really, yeah. To answer your question right there, yeah, it didn't start in January because it really kind of never ends. You know, it goes on. We meet probably every six weeks during budget season, season. It may be every three to four weeks. So there was open discussion and there was, you know, there were good faith negotiations throughout the entire, you know, the entire process. So I don't really, that intransigent, intransigence and intractable, I don't really know where that came from because, you know, all of our meetings are open and all of our finances are discussed, you know, in these meetings. So I'm not quite sure, you know, what the disconnect is, but we'll continue to work with people going forward, or you guys will.
No, absolutely. And that's good. The only other item that was noted, and I guess I just put it in as a placeholder, was there was the request from that depending upon how the outcomes of any federal monies or reimbursements go, that we consider fixing, or I guess addressing, reducing the allocations during this budget year. And I think we, that's going to be another discussion. We've discussed replenishing reserves, reducing assessments, things like that. So thank you and Annie very much for the work that you've done over the years, especially for setting us up with more importantly, I think than anything else, is showing us that there is a process that can be repeated and sustained.
Yeah, yeah. And thank you for pointing that out. In terms of where, you know, we land in, in receiving any federal monies, we're also waiting to hear from the towns, you know, regarding what they might possibly share with us in terms of CARES dollars and some COVID-related, not reimbursements, but COVID-related funding. And just to give everybody a quick reminder, a lot of, all municipalities received COVID money. The schools didn't necessarily receive COVID money directly as a region. We have received some monies under different umbrellas, but in terms of some of those CARES dollars, those CARES dollars went to municipalities and those municipalities, if they had a school in their municipality, you know, that's, that's where those CARES dollars went. So it's just a question of different buckets and we're waiting to hear from the towns as, you know, what, you know, how they can help us or maybe we can help them. So all of this stuff from the government, all these funds from the government are still, you know, there's still some question marks and how that's being spent. So yes, there is still, you know, possible movement on both sides. And that's why we have those collaborative discussions.
And I'll just note, coming up in my report, we have an update on those numbers and a recap because we also noted that that was a clarification we wanted to make coming out of town meeting. So stay tuned, we'll revisit this in just a few minutes.
Yeah, and one last thing to add, I'm sorry, I'm tracking you into this, Shannon. As you pointed out, it's the, there's a difference between the two municipalities in Manchester and Essex and MERSD. We are three separate entities. So I've just witnessed over my five years in the committee and you managed it well. The budgeting process and the collaboration truly is almost more intense than when the schools are part of a, a single town because there are three parties involved and there are tensions from both towns kind of keeping an eye on things. And I, I guess it really struck home to me this time how important that is and how that much tension just makes for a much more open process regardless. Because there's multiple stakeholders to be satisfied.
Yeah, when we have, you know, three different entities, it's, it's critical that there is open dialogue and, and constant collaboration, which is what we've had. And, you know, we have, we basically started, I think, the budget discussions in November with the Essex FinCom. So I mean, like, that's how far back it goes and those discussions were even happening prior to November in terms of what the year might look like as COVID unfolds. So, yeah, it's a long-going process, but we can, we can leave it there. Thank you for pointing those things out.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. That was, it's certainly been a very complicated year. All right, I don't believe we have a report from the negotiating team. So we can go on to Pam.
Do we need policy committee?
Oh, policy. I'm sorry, I crossed it out already. I don't know what I was thinking. That's crazy. Yes, we do actually have some policy to discuss.
Want me to give a recap?
Yeah.
Okay. So our donations policy, as discussed at the last meeting, is in process and as we discussed, Pam sent out a copy of the Medfield policy for input, for people to send back input to her so that she could draft some language with that. Pam, did you receive any input from people?
I did get your notes today, but that was it to date.
Okay. So the, the policy itself, as we discussed last time, has some good bones and I think there's a little bit, I know my major concern is implementing a, including a threshold for involvement. That's, that's really my only concern with using their policy is that it really centralizes a lot of the, the decision-making with school committee and superintendent that currently happens at the building level. So there's a little more work to be done there, but it is in process.
My, my only input on this, and it can come up as part of a future discussion, Teresa and Eric, thank you for that, is historically there have been groups, whether it's PTOs or some of the Spalding Educational Fund or the Hooper Fund and other charitable organizations that do donate, and it might be good when we have the discussion on the donations to kind of do a recap of how those are usually handled.
I agree. I think, I think that's really the glaring obvious thing here is that some of the things in the Medfield template, or things that are PTOs, for example, already do donate, you know, pretty regularly and it's not an overwhelming issue or anything like that. So it might be an issue of just removing some language or, like I said, including a threshold, depending on how we want to do it. But the, the process for, or the information in there about identifying and, or making decisions on what to accept, what not, there are definitely.
And just one last question.
Teresa, you're just picking up a little.
All right, I was muting myself back in, sorry.
And one last quick, quick one, just in terms of this, I'm assuming that, that trail that we're following isn't, because we have later on the discussion around donations for the Eagles Nest Playground. Does, does this discussion around the, the donations policy, does that tie in anywhere? Can we, are we addressing them separately? Because I, my understanding is some of the donations is that the Eagles Nest is either prior to any policy change and may even, there's some elements of donation that are prior to even the district formation.
So I'll let Pam lead on that. I have my opinion on it, but I think it's part of the discussion about Eagles Nest type stuff.
Okay. It doesn't have to happen now, it's just more, since, before I forget.
Pam, did you want to tackle any of the donations around the Eagles Nest now or wait until we talk about the Eagles Nest?
I think when we talk about the Eagles Nest later on the agenda, it will have all of the component parts that you asked for last week to be brought forward and considered on a parallel track to our new policy formation.
Super. It's good. That's great. Okay. And then we can lead right into Pam.
Okay, I'm going to continue with both the theme, with the themes that Sarah noted in her comments and Shannon's as well. First, I want to thank Shannon. I think we, you came on to the committee maybe just a year or two after I arrived. So we've been working together for eight-plus years and I just thank you for everything that you've done for the district, for the time, the energy, your financial expertise, and just your support for kids throughout. It's really been, you will be missed, but I know you won't be far away. And I think there's some work we can find for you if you're interested. Also want to welcome Kate. Good to have you on the committee. We're going to have another new member next week. So this is a time of change for us. And, you know, never hesitate to reach out with any questions you have about the process and we will be, I will be reaching out to you and our anticipated new member from Manchester to kind of set up some, kind of get to know, get to know the committee process discussions. And then the other comment or theme that I'm carrying through from Sarah is just hoping to clear up some misconceptions that were put forth at the town meeting in Essex on Saturday. Again, we're very thankful for the support of the Manch, of the Essex citizens, supporting our budget going through. And we heard very loudly and clearly that you want us to continue to work to find any efficiencies we can to lessen the burden on taxpayers. And I think that's been our mode of operation and budget building from the onset. Also, I want to reiterate that we take an extremely collaborative approach, meeting at least monthly, beginning in September of every year to discuss budget with the way the past two years have unfolded. Those meetings have been with even greater frequency and have really branched into conversation not only about finance, but about public health and other joint ventures that we could do to support or regionalize services. So we are always looking to partner with the two towns on resource allocation, efficiencies, and just long-term planning. So I'd asked Avi to put together a few, just objective looks at some numbers, some things. Two things that I heard at the town meeting that I think we want to clear up before going into the Manchester Town Meeting is just the COVID costs. What, there was a comment made that we would be getting a great deal of money from the feds. We want, we want to identify clearly for you what we anticipate we're getting in terms of report. And also just a brief historic, a five-year look at what the assessment number is and how that translates into the apportionment number for the town. And I think this is something we need to do work on as a, as a district and a committee going forward, which is there's a lot of technical language around the regional budget that I'm not sure always translates for the average person who's not following every single meeting that we go to. But we talk back and forth and interchangeably almost about the assessment and growth of the district annually and the apportionment assessment assigned to the towns. And the analogy I use is like you're going out to dinner with a bunch of families and the bill comes. And when you have to divvy up that bill, what it costs for each family is going to be slightly different based on the number of people you brought to that dinner party. And that's essentially what happens with our district budget. We calculate our level funded, our level service budget from year to year. Level service means bringing forward the same amount of personnel and program from one year to the next. And that runs, we know, between about three and three and a half percent growth rate per year to just keep things the same as they were the year before. Then that number gets put through that apportionment formula that's in the regional agreement and gets split into two different percentage numbers that get assigned to the towns. And those numbers are based on past year spending. But those numbers are derived by the number of students in schools, property values, and population size. So things that are completely out of our control. But a number that's 3.5 in total could turn into a 3.9 or a 2.5 for just, for one of the two towns in a given year. So there's a lot of fluctuation. So two things I asked Avi to just put together tonight as part of my report to make sure the committee's clear on as we go to the next town meeting. And anybody who's, who's tuning in tonight from Essex who wants just a clarification to some of the comments that were made in open town meeting. So Avi, do you mind taking us through those two items?
Happy to do that. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So I think starting off with the big picture numbers that Pam was talking about. Again, you can see here for each town and then the total right below them, what the cost is to the towns for each of the fiscal years that are shown in the five-year average. So that's what we call the assessment. You've got the definitions down below. That's the cost that the school budget is to each town. And just remember that in our community, the towns take up, you know, about 85% of the cost of our school system with the state aid taking up the remainder. So the town portion obviously is what the taxpayers notice. And the reason, you know, if, for those that might be new, why we get so little state aid, that's purely determined by formula based on income of both communities. And so that's not really something that we can change, as well as enrollment. So here's the assessment. You can see that the increases have been in that same range that Pam talked about in the five-year average, around 3.2% overall. But as Pam said, depending on some of the formula inputs of which town is sending a higher proportion of students to the district enrollment, which town's property values are going up relative to the others. If, you know, they might both be going up, but if one's growing faster than the other, then the contract between the two towns that they created when we were regionalized suggests that towns with higher ability to tax through property values will share a greater portion of the burden. So you can see that the, even though, for example, in fiscal 18, there's a 3.2% increase to in the bill to the towns in total, there's a higher cost for Manchester. And what you notice is that for the first couple of years, Manchester was paying a higher amount and it started to, or it's growing, its assessment was going faster. And that started to shift. Why? Because I think property values in Essex have been catching up to property values in Manchester. Enrollment in, from Essex students has been climbing slightly relative to those from Manchester as well. Population, we only really look at every decennial census. That's not as big of a factor. So you can see here, you know, these, these numbers are pretty low in the, at the 3.2% rate. But you can also see in fiscal 22 that the budget we've got adopted, it's a little bit higher at 3.5%. And as, as we've been talking about, the, the split is higher for Essex at 3.96% versus 3.24%. We really can't control that split. It's set up by the formula. There's nothing that we can do to change that. All we can do is impact our spending. And once spending comes in, the split or the apportionment really depends on the number of students from each town, the property values, population. So unfortunately, it's not really something that we can control in terms of which town will pick up a rising share or lower share. What we can control is the total assessment of the towns. I can, any questions before I move off of this? Otherwise I can get on to the, the COVID and CARES Act updates.
Avi, it's, can, is it fair to say that for the past, for the past five years, the Essex apportionment has been larger than the Manchester apportionment from this chart?
Three, three years, FY '20, '21, and '22.
Gotcha. Okay.
Actually, I, I do have a question. Could you just elaborate a little more on the asterisk at the bottom of the page?
Yeah, so you can see that that total cost increase to the towns that year is 2.85%. When we, back in fiscal 16 was the last time we had a revenue correction from the towns that was different from what you'd expect with Proposition 2 and a half. In Manchester, there was an override. In Essex, the town was able to use additional funds to increase the contribution without having to vote on an override. And one of the things that we strategically sought to do at that time was to stop, to get off of the practice of suppressing town assessments by using one-time funding reserves as a revenue source for what is really a recurring cost in our school budget. So it's really not best practice to be using reserves. Sometimes you can use them in small amounts, especially if, if they're growing a little too quickly. But generally speaking, they're one-time funds, so they shouldn't be used for recurrent costs. That's best practice. So we stopped doing that in fiscal 16. But when we got to fiscal 20, as you can see in the asterisks, we are around 3.3%, very much in line with their typical numbers, which really reflects the fact that our, our budgeting tends to be very stable. And we were asked to lower the cost of the Town of Essex. And we were asked to lower the cost of the town of Essex by using reserves. So that was the first year we put $100,000 of reserves in and that brought the 3.3 total down to 2.85. And you know, the, the problem was, you know, one year, it might not have been such a big deal. Fiscal 21 budget is when we started to anticipate state aid reductions because of COVID. And that's where the number, you know, needed to jump up to 335,000. And, and here we are now talking about the same number in fiscal 22. So you can see how reserves, once they're introduced, it's hard to get them out.
Can I ask a really basic question on this?
Yes.
So when we talk about the assessment, the assessment is basically that total number that we present to both towns. Then it gets split. And it's not necessarily a straight two-thirds, one-third split, correct? That's what the apportionment tells us. That tells us how to sort of navigate that split and what, what it, you know, kind of the intricacies of the not so straight one-third, two-third, correct?
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. And the, the, sometimes you can be talking about hundreds of a percentage point difference that can really make in, in the split. So you might be talking like 66.3% one year versus 66.5% one year in terms of maybe the cost to Manchester. Still, it's been roughly two-thirds, one-third, roughly speaking. But those small differences can really create big changes on this page right here.
And Avi, can you tell us what's the cash equivalent of one percentage point?
Sure. In the most recent budget, and I'm just pulling up my cheat sheet here. It's one percentage point is about $243,000. So if somebody were to say, we want the total assessment to go from 3.5 to 3.0 in fiscal 22, that would be half of that amount. And then we have to figure out how that breaks out for each town. The other thing that's interesting to note that is, let's say one town, let's just say, for example, Essex would say, we want the number to be $50,000 lower because they are about a third of the cost, we would actually need to cut three times that, 150,000 so that it would break out 100 being reduced for Manchester and for Essex to get that 50,000 and vice versa. So it's not always so easy as being able to make a fine-tune adjustment for one community. And we know that the different communities in different years have different needs. And as Ken pointed out, in other years, it might've been Manchester that was getting a number that was high. So we understand that this can fluctuate over time. But again, it can be challenging for us to try to manage our cost side when small changes in the demographics between the towns could lead to pain more in one community than another. And then you're faced with the question of, you know, should we be cutting costs or using more reserves because of the fact that, you know, the shift is shifting one way or the other to one community or the other? And we certainly understand the pain point, but it, it leads to some tricky decisions.
So kind of in summary, Avi, is it fair to say that the, the growth of the district on an annual basis has been relatively stable with shifts occurring in which town picks up a larger portion of that growth rate?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. So moving on to the other misconception, or maybe we don't know something and we need to be open to that. But there was a statement that we were coming into a great deal of federal aid. We are not aware of anything coming to us in federal aid other than what's on this page. And if we do get more, we are certainly open to looking at a way to use those funds to support our towns. But this is our CARES funding estimates to date. So Avi, you want to take us through?
I'll, I'll be brief, but basically it's been coming out in phases. We saw the first 403,000 come out really back at the, around the summertime when people were getting ready to open. We knew right away that our costs were going to be much more significant than that amount. And I think we were definitely hit by the fact, A, that some of this was based on funding for low-income districts. That was difficult for us. But also, as somebody mentioned earlier, a lot of funding was going straight to towns. And so you can see at the bottom here that there's a significant amount of money that's going to each town. And that's because a lot of towns have a school system that's baked into their town government, which is different for regional school districts. And when this is all happening at the federal level, there hasn't really been an adjustment for the fact that, you know, in certain states like Massachusetts, if you have a regional school district, that simple formula creates a lot of complications as it, as we're certainly experiencing. Coming back around the end of December, towards the end of the year, that's when we were hearing about the final stimulus package that really happened over Christmas break. That's the 252,000 additional fund that came in. And our last budget update, we talked about the total number here, which is, I believe it's, I have a hard time reading. It's about $660,000 where we were. But we also said that we knew there was new stimulus coming and that we had a rough estimate of what it was. That's the $442,000 that we now know about. So the number continues to climb. This is real money, which is great. One point, you know, almost 1.1 million dollars, which is amazing. I think that last item, phase three, which hasn't been actually opened and granted to us, but we know it's coming. That might be the big wave of money that some people are talking about. It certainly is a significant amount of money. I think the important thing for us to keep in mind, keeping things very simple, is that even with this new wave, you're talking of about 1.1 million dollars. And as we've shown previously, and we'll, we'll get back to it in the next slide, you know, we're currently at about 1.6 million dollars. Now, if you're a taxpayer, the good news is, you know, we didn't come to the towns or to voters in the middle of the year and say, we need a special town meeting because this is going to cost us 1.6 million dollars. This is something that we've done to keep the doors open. We entered the fiscal downturn in very strong financial position, which meant that our reserves were healthy and strong. And so we were able to fund that. But 1.6 million dollars, if it were all come out of reserves, would be a significant hit. And you know, it is, as I mentioned, reserves are designed for one-time uses. So this is the perfect type of rainy day situation where you want to use them. But that's such a significant portion of our potential reserves that it would, it would be really detrimental. After the anticipated funding, we're still currently looking at a net cost of about $520,000. Still a very, very significant hit to our reserves. It's much, it is offset. We're thankful for the federal dollars. And that's where, looking at the town funds that are down below, which are completely separate, and we know the towns have their own COVID costs. That's where that discussion of funding that might help the collaborative process could really go either way. If the funding increases to MERSD such that we take this 518 negative number and it starts to become positive, great. I don't believe I've heard any discussions of a fourth round of funding at all. And it is anticipated that phase three is supposed to be multi-year in nature. So I would say, based on what we're hearing, that is extremely unlikely, not even a little bit unlikely. However, I think we haven't really gotten quite as far in our conversations with the towns about how some of that $4 million between Manchester's 2.3 and Essex's 1.7 might be able to be used. We've had preliminary conversations. I think those have been very collaborative, just like the other collaborative conversations. They've, they've gone well, but they are still premature and we don't really know how to shake up, shake out. But clearly with 520,000 rough estimate at this point in the hole, that's a part of the sharing of federal reserve, federal funds that we want to, that conversation we want to continue to have. It's very important. So that's the CARES funding. And then we'll just, I think, quickly show again, what are those 1.6 million dollars? This is the same set of figures that we showed at, in April. And you can see some of the items that take, you know, make up that number. And there's the, you know, the updated 1.097 down below and how we get to the 518,000. So it, it's still anticipated that we're going to fall far short. So the only other thing that, you know, if you want, I could take some questions on COVID costs and federal CARES money. And then we'll just get to a quick FY 22 budget updates, really just one quick update. So any questions on CARES and COVID?
Avi, I'm just going to toss one question because this is one other thing that was mentioned, I think is very important to clarify. There was a note made that we were concerned about using reserves because of the impact to our bond rating. But the context is important there. Why would we be concerned about our bond rating?
Yeah. So first, we just, because we were recently upgraded on our bond rating before the COVID downturn, that helped us to get significant savings when we borrowed 35 million to build Memorial School. That's savings that goes to members of both Manchester and Essex. And so that's, bond ratings really help you when you borrow. We still have potentially $5 million of borrowing that we've yet to do because the project isn't completed. And so there's no question that when S and P, who rates our bonds and has, you know, looked at us favorably, comes back for another update, one of the first questions they're going to ask is, tell us about COVID costs. Tell us about your use of reserves and tell us about your use of reserves for your operating budget. I think it's understandable when they get used for rainy day purposes like COVID. I don't think that that's favorable for us. But when they get used for operating purposes, that's more concerning. And all that does really, our bonds are paid 100% by the towns. There is no state aid that pays for the bonds. And so we, we're doing our best to keep that cost down to taxpayers. And if you look at some of the items, information that we've put in our updates in our town brochure, we've had significant savings because we continue to refinance when interest rates are low because we are considered very high credit rating. So we need to be careful about the long-term implications of how we use reserves.
Avi, can I just point out one thing? I think that is really, really important that you just pointed out. So not only did we have a very excellent rating when we went to put those bonds out, but we still had an excellent rating when we went to refinance. So not only did we save money on the initial funding, but we also saved money on the refinance by having such a good credit rating. And I think that's critical as, you know, we start looking at taking on another very large project for Essex Elementary. So thank, I'm glad you pointed that out.
And Shannon, I'm glad you brought up Essex Elementary because I think throughout this entire budget process, what we've been trying to do is have a multi-year look and a futuristic look. So the way, we don't have the chart with us right now, but when we looked at the projected use of reserves over time, it would bring a deterioration in our reserves to a crisis point at just about the same time, we would be potentially beginning the process of the Essex Elementary renovate or rebuild discussion with MSBA. So it wouldn't, we want to be very careful not to do things now in the short term that is going to negatively position us for coming, for making good on our, our game plan to have that building addressed in the near future. So I think we've tried to tie into this entire budget process, not only what can we do? What's the best case scenario for the immediate budget need? But also what we do now needs to have a resolution before we move on to the next project. So thanks for bringing that up. Any other questions just on these, these big picture items on the FY 22 budget proposal? And then Avi's going to give us a, a quick update. Another factor that's playing into our hesitancy to make any adjustments.
The, the one thing, and maybe it doesn't need to be addressed here, but that was also just thrown out of the meeting while I'm remembering it was around enrollment declining. And I think that's been a fact of life for, I was going to say it's, it's the birth rate. It's, it's not just our district, it's many others, but the costs, the, the cost increases are the cost increases. But that's going to be one thing, I think, is we typically, we get the enrollment numbers in the, sometime over the summers when you, we have a feel for what enrollment for FY 22 will be. From an actual sense.
We have a good sense of it now. It could fluctuate over the summer. Up is usually the direction it goes. But Ken, I'm glad you bring that up as well because if we look back to how we achieved some of the lower three percentage increases over time, each of these years has personnel cuts built into them. We've been taking them by attrition where, when enrollment allows and retirements happen, we have been taking reductions by attrition. So that's another area we can go back and pull from our slide deck and map out for people. But we have cut staff where possible to address enrollment. But not to go into every fine detail of our budget, enrollment does not equal, declining enrollment does not necessarily equal declining costs. And I think our last slide is going to show us a little bit of why. Because every student, the cost of every student isn't the same. And we have mandated costs that we have to provide for whether or not enrollment is high or low or the dollars are there in the operating budget. So we've been tracking out-of-district placements, you know, that's something we watch and has been, has had an impact on our budget of late. So Avi, would you just want to take us through the, the good news, bad news scenario in terms of finances?
And this is something that we really previewed already, I think, just prior to the final adoption of the budget in terms of the healthcare savings continuing to be a good news story. Everyone remembers the really tough year in fiscal 18 where we had to absorb without increasing the assessments or the costs to the towns, a 28% increase in health insurance, which is our second largest cost after salaries and personnel. But through a lot of careful planning, restructuring, collaboration with the Teachers Association on plan design, we changed what, how, how our benefits are structured such that it's continued to reap savings and our renewal rates have been, the increases have been very low. So we had very good year for the fiscal 22 quote, which we did anticipate was going to save us quite a good amount of money, right around $200,000 when we last adopted the budget. Sorry, talked about that savings and debated whether to change the budget in mid-March. We knew about $100,000 potential overage and out-of-district tuitions that was coming in that revised estimates closer to $200,000. So we really, these are costs, we've talked about how we forecast for them and do our best to kind of anticipate things. We have really offset a large portion of these costs through our in-district programs. But as we know, in, in some rare cases, and it's typically the higher cost cases, the types of needs that a student might have are not things that are typically served by almost any districts and district programs. And we have more than most. So that's where this type of cost can really offset any healthcare savings that we're seeing. And so it really is not feeling like we're entering fiscal 22 right now with the same type of good news that we were feeling when we got that health insurance update. So I think without the health insurance good news, it would be more concerning. But I think this is definitely kind of counterbalancing things. And I think it speaks to the issue of just how easy is it for us to cut our spending estimate now and, and give that money back to the towns? I think between this and the CARES Act deficit that we're talking about, you can see that we're still facing some headwinds. The only other data point while we're on it, I did have to get out my budget booklet that we had just sent out. Just within regards to the bonds and the bond ratings, it was $2 million that we saved on the, on the Memorial School project compared to the estimates we brought to the vote for the project. Do, and then we refinanced middle high school debt again, two times for the two different tranches, which saved us $17 million over the life of the bonds. So we're really, these are significant impacts, you know, upwards of 600, 700,000 dollars. So when we talk about the benefits of reserves, it's not just esoteric kind of concept that is just about hoarding, you know, money in a special lockbox. This is about lowering costs to taxpayers. And sometimes we could talk about lowering it one way in a short-term benefit in one year. But sometimes you get a lot more multi-year bang for the buck. It really helps taxpayers over time by making sure you're using them in last-case scenarios and, you know, making sure that your borrowing capacity is strong.
So we saved taxpayers $19 million on a $52 million project.
It was 17 million for that, for that project. It was 2 million from the middle school, high school bonds.
Okay. The old bonds. Got it, got it. So that's, that's really, really significant. I'm glad you got out the budget book.
Can I say one thing before we move on? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I just want to say that coming into school committee last year, starting with all the chaos, I was really overwhelmed and intimidated by the budget and budgeting process. And I want to thank you because Avi and Pam, you have repeated this information. I don't even know how many times, to the point where between budget, public hearings for the budget, going through this in, in open school committee meeting, private meetings, collaboration meetings, I've heard it enough that even I understand it. And so I just want to thank you for making yourselves available and being so patient with all of us laypeople who need to learn and understand this. And just to reiterate a thanks for really making this accessible if we choose to take advantage of, of the learning opportunity. So thank you for doing that this year.
I have to hop on that because I also want to thank Teresa and Matt, who in preparation for Shani, Shannon, Shani, Shannon, Shannon and Annie team, not being here to be on the finance subcommittee next year, Teresa and Matt have put in the extra time to shadow them and learn the whole process and the process of the collaborative meeting. And that's just one of the ways that our board is preparing its members to take on the duties of next year. So thank you guys for doing that too.
And the one thing that anybody who's a new listener to this can always help us with is we do repeat it so often and we talk to each- is we do repeat it so often and we talk to each other so often. And we've been doing it for so many years that what makes sense to us may not make sense to other people. So stopping us and slowing us down and asking us to clarify or use different terms, I think would be helpful for everybody involved because we can get in the weeds sometimes.
Will, on that note, will you be posting this presentation, excuse me, with the apportionment and assessment slide online? Because I think that's super helpful and a really good snapshot if people take the time to look at it.
Yes. Yep.
At the risk of overstating my budget welcome, I want to just add one quick last final comment, which is as I sat and listened to some of the town meeting comments, I think one of the questions that came up was whether we were willing to use more reserves to fund the operating budget. And so just to summarize what we're talking about, number one, it's an act of putting multi-year revenue, sorry, using one-time funds reserves in a multi-year budget, which means that next year you have a potential challenge. And number two, it does impact your borrowing capacity, which we know is a problem down the road, we're dealing with problems today, you could, you could debate that. But I think it's not about whether we want to use them, it's about what the right way to use them. And, and if we do get to a point where we want to put more reserves into the operating budget, despite the risks of using one-time funds for multi-year costs, we need to understand what the exit game plan is. So if there's one message that I could leave the committee with, it's, it is one thing to use reserves as a revenue source for a year or two. We must have a strategy because they will be used eventually and run out. And so once we start using them, it's our job to say to you, let's just figure out what the game plan is. And there's really, there's no mystery to it. It's cut costs or increase revenue in, in more, in a different way from the communities. And so that's the, the multi-year work that we need to talk about. And it could be a combination of the two, but we can't look at the single-year budgets alone without thinking about what's going to happen two to three years from now.
Okay, if we're good with the budget, I'm going to jump into a topic that I didn't anticipate. We would be talking about tonight, but there's been some movement on state level COVID policy. And it has implications for the schools. So just very quickly, I'm going to recommend that we amend local policy to align with the revisions to the state-level guidance. And two areas came out, Jesse came out with a COVID guidance update around no longer having students wearing masks outdoors at recess and at play. And then Maya followed up with a similar policy, not requiring athletes to be wearing masks or spectators to be wearing masks outside when they can socially distance. So we can certainly hold to our current in-district policy. But I know I've been fielding some phone calls, I'm sure Tricia, I know asked today, we had a game this afternoon. We did hold on the policy for one more day because I wanted to have a quick discussion with you tonight. But it, it looks like we are going into, back to a more normalized way of doing business. So if the committee's comfortable, I'm, I'm more than, I feel more than comfortable recommending that we, we align ourselves to the continuing moving target of the state guidance. So if discussion and just looking for a sense of if we're all on the same place on this.
Are we going to need a motion so that we can then have discussion? Or are we gonna, will we vote to amend it?
Well, I think, go ahead, Sarah.
I was just gonna say, I don't, we can't vote, we can't vote on anything because it wasn't on the agenda.
So I think there's some question as to whether you have to vote or not have to vote.
I think it seems like we would not have to vote since it's just DC guidance and we're just kind of going on to the new, but Teresa's.
Well, but didn't, didn't we adopt an actual policy? Like, didn't we write and vote in a policy at the beginning of the year about that?
You did, and I think because of the timing on this, Colby would probably concur that this is, what's the phrase? It is an issue unanticipated 48 hours ahead of the agenda. Because it just posted yesterday and our closest, our closest meeting is tonight. And if we feel the need to take a vote, we would be then making, either adding a meeting, we could vote next Tuesday, or we'd be pushing it out to June 1st and having them continue on as is. So I'm open to feedback, I'm comfortable implementing it at an administrative level as well.
So Pam, I guess you, you alluded to yourself and Tricia and others have been fielding questions from the community.
So when we get to the end of year activities update, all of the end of year activities have now been moved outside on the field.
Yep.
So this will impact how spectators come, how that we order them and what we ask them to do when they get here.
I guess, is there any impact on this or any, have there been any concerns? And I appreciate there are special events planned for end of year, but does this, is there much of, have you heard much feedback on just the conduct of the ordinary day-to-day from members, the, the teachers, the, the administrators, the kind of the parents, the students? And has there been feedback on that or has it just really been around the end of year stuff?
It's been, as soon as something comes up, what do you want us to do? Is the question, because what we're, what's going to happen, and I'm going to be really blunt, is we're going to get people calling us and telling us that they don't have to do what we're telling them to do because the governor has now said it's all been rescinded. So it's, you know, I don't know that we need to have that battle ongoing. The one thing that will, will not change is in-school face coverings remain required for indoor staff and students. So our in, indoor operation won't change. They're changing the out-of-door operation and the whole thing is syncing up with the big change to occur just ahead of any end-of-year event. So, I mean, we can just say we're not ready to rule, keep everything in place for another week and I will put that message out to the community.
I guess my, just to close out, I was asking just to see if there were any practicalities or is all this just a result of the kind of coming as the announcements and things going along? So I guess I'm not hearing practical concerns that have come up or?
Well, the one practical concern is it was 80 degrees today and we were playing Newburyport. And Newburyport wasn't wearing their masks, nor did they require it on their campus, but our students did because I said, let's hold to this for one more day. So that's going to be an ongoing discussion. And I know Trish is on the line. If, Trish, if you want to open your mic and weigh in on what practical matters you are managing just on the athletics front. And I think, I bucketed them together, just one second, Trish, because once we do it for athletics, I just, I, if we're doing it for one thing, I don't know that we have reason not to be doing it for the other.
So this has been a practice that's been accepted by the youth sports associations and been adopted in towns for youth sports. And at the high school level, the KPN league, the majority of the schools are going no mask. I don't have the exact numbers on every single school. However, today again, for Newburyport, we were playing a game. And, you know, they, they were unmasked there and here. The refs do not, are not masked. And that's because of the state guidance. And with the heat and talking to Jordan, you know, we think there's actually a greater concern. We're playing later into the season than we typically do with the extended season. And with the early on heat, I think there's a greater health risk to kids wearing a mask, running at full speed than there might be with COVID in terms of what the numbers show for transmission and outside close contact.
Thank you for that.
Do we need to vote or what do we decide?
It's.
Or Pam, you'll just want input, like, do you want our opinion?
Well, you need to think, I, I can take your opinion and I, you can say, go make an administrative decision on this. Or we can agree that, you know, we have a policy and we need to take a school committee level vote to undo that policy.
I don't have, I don't have any objections.
I'm teaching in a local school district and our kids just today started playing at recess without their masks on. And there are kids who I've been teaching for months and I had realized that I had never seen their full face because even when they had their mask down, it was over their chin. And it was so wonderful to see all of their smiling faces outside, playing and having that piece of normalcy. And my son just got home from soccer practice and said that they didn't have to wear their masks at soccer practice today either. So, you know, regardless of what we're doing in schools, the kids are going to continue doing what they're doing through our local youth sports. I will say that the one issue that we did run into over and over again today is how kids are going to keep their masks clean if they're wearing them in the hallway to go out to recess. What do they do with their mask while they're at recess? I teach upper elementary, so our kids are a little bit more capable of handling it, but I can only imagine some of the messes that would be coming in with kindergartners and first graders if they're meant to carry their mask with them outside.
I think Jennifer Roberts is on the call. Do you want to, do you think elementary school kids will be okay?
Well.
Hi Sarah, can you hear me?
Yes, you're perfect.
Okay, it's funny that Kate brought that up because I was sitting here jotting notes and, you know, I'm all for letting them have outdoor play without their masks, but that was the one question that came to my mind is that, you know, some kids might have a pocket they can put it in, some kids won't. If they wear it around their chin, that, you know, that's a possibility because at least it's off their face. I'd be curious what Kate says their district is doing because as soon as we line them up to bring them in, it's like a well-oiled machine, how quickly they enter. And I can't quite logistically figure out that part of it. I'm sure we could figure out a way, but that's the one thing that's sort of eaten at me. Kate, do they have a system set up?
So there's no system because it just started so abruptly today, right? It was the guidance came down last night and it went into effect today at school. Some of the kids had them around their wrists and that seems to work okay. Some kids had lanyards and that was probably the ideal solution. But some kids, neither of those options worked for them. And so they were like putting them in their lunch boxes and then they come out and they've got like yogurt residue on, you know, that's.
And I bring it forward more because of the abruptness and the level at which the policy has changed. And the question is to, I'm sure, we can always figure out kind of how to make it work for kids. It won't be easy, it's going to, you know, take some doing. But more do, is there enough evidence for us to continue to fight this on the local level? Or should we just accept where the state is going because the next domino to fall will be indoor masks?
I think we should just accept where the state is going. But I think maybe we, I don't know if maybe we want to give it a day or two to just let the maybe principals get some guidance, like not guidance, guidance, but some suggestions out to families about maybe like bringing extra masks or having a lanyard or having some kind of system, giving everybody a chance to wrap their brains around what the system will be before we just go willy-nilly all in so that we don't end up with kids who don't have comfortable masks to wear at the end of the day.
Sarah, can I?
Getting back to, sorry, I think getting back to, you know, Pam's original question, like board versus school level. I think school level can figure out those logistics and whatever day makes sense for them. We're end of the week, start of the week, I think that's, I'm comfortable with you guys making that decision and then planning those logistics.
As long as it's both, as long as it's both elementary schools on the same day.
Sarah, can I just respond to that? Is that okay?
Yes.
I, I full, fully hope that we can get the kids to not have to wear their masks outside. They were all asking today because they got wind of this, you know, at home. To tell them they had to sit tight, you know, the school committee has to talk about it and they were kind of bummed about that. So what I would say is maybe middle high because they're older and more mature, they can figure that out. But if we could just have, maybe even start it on, I don't know what day is, you know, Monday next week. So we have a chance to figure out the strategy of how we're going to keep the kids safe re-entering. And maybe that's too long, maybe we just need like 48 hours. But I would say that John and I, if we could have a couple of days, we could sync up and maybe strategize. I'm sure there's solutions to this, I just haven't really thought about it yet. So that would be my, my thought on it.
Can I jump in my last, sort of my last gasp? I'm sort of of the mind, we just go for it, we go for it. And if, if John and Jennifer need a day or so, fine, but I think we institute this as quickly as possible. Because I think, you know, people are ready for this, everyone has followed the rules and they've done the right thing. And this is where we are. So I think we just go ahead with it. I think the kids should take their masks off outside, as this says, the athletes should take their masks off, all of it. And, and I think maybe if you guys, John and Jennifer can get together and figure this out very quickly, I think the quicker the better because I don't, I don't really see why we need to wait 48 hours, to be perfectly honest. I, I, again, I'm not there, I'm not in the buildings. But I think, you know, we, we thought that kids wearing masks inside would be really difficult and they'd have a really difficult time with it. And, you know, we were worried about their, their cooperation with it. It went fine, the kids didn't seem really to have a problem and things by all accounts went pretty smoothly. So I think we, we, we do this as quickly as possible. That's my two cents and it's not worth anything anymore anyway.
It's still worth, it still is.
I'm in agreement with that, Shannon. I think at this level, the decision is we're going to go with the state-level guidance. We'll make that known tomorrow and then each building needs to figure out its own timeline of making it work.
No, I was just, this is John, I was just going to say, I think between, you know, the wrist, the chin, sorry, the wrist, the chin and the pocket, for the few that get the stray yogurt, will have extra boxes at the door of, of masks. I know Jason has bought a ton of them, so I don't, I don't think it should be that difficult or hold this up.
That sounds like a really good solution. Extra boxes of disposable masks at the door, I like it. I say maybe we could make a motion to vote on this to, in support of, well, however you want, but we could have a motion.
So move to end to amend the local policy to align with the state guidance and I, yeah.
That was Ken, do you have a second?
I'll second Shannon.
All right, Eric?
Yeah.
Annie? Annie's, oh my gosh, I'm looking at the wrong one. Shannon, I'm assuming you're a yes?
I'm a yes, yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes ma'am.
I'm still learning about the motions and, and everything. Pam, do we need to mention in the motion though that this is an emergency, you know, with, kind of thing, or is that not matter?
I would, I think it makes good sense to have Gail just say that this is in response to guidance that was put out today.
Okay.
Yesterday and today, the MIAA thing came in the mailbox this morning and people were acting on it this afternoon. So Gail, can you tag this topic as not anticipated within the last 48 hours? I'm going to take that as a yes.
That is definitely not anticipated within the last 48 hours because we just really got that email and it was very surprising and, and exciting.
It's exciting.
I'm glad that we're feeling comfortable and confident.
And I think with what's coming out on May 29th, I, I want to get the principals to talk about the end of the year activities, but I think we can consider that the group, we don't have to talk about it right this second, we can revisit at the end of the meeting, but we may want to consider if we want to have our last large meeting of, on the first in the library.
I think that's a great idea.
So put a pin in that. Do you mind if we shift, seeing as we're on the topic of schools and the principals and the end of the year activities, if we have them run down what they're planning?
No, that's them.
And I guess we'll preface it by saying, another look at the, there could be some updates and changes to this as we go. I think it will align with everything that's in play, but I'm not 100% sure. Let me just grab that slide deck.
Can I just clarify, sorry, before we move on, if we're talking about end of the year celebrations that are going to be outside, our policy that we just passed is for students only. Is that correct? So parents who are on campus to pick their kids up or for whatever other reason, if they are not six feet away from people, they still need to be wearing masks.
Correct.
Okay. And it's really specific in the MIAA one, too.
This is the one I would zero in on right here, which will be replicated. If you're, if you can social distance, you're fine. If you can't social distance, you should continue to wear a mask.
Pam, can I just ask, how does that affect the children? The six feet, because I, just trying to be clear, I feel like I missed.
Students no longer have to wear masks in outdoors even if distance cannot be maintained.
All right, so parents, if they're coming to pick up their kids and they're milling around outside close to each other? Okay.
At this time, adults and students must continue to wear masks inside the school, inside. And if they can't maintain social distance outside, they should continue to wear their masks. And if they can't maintain social distance outside, they should continue to wear their mask. I will send everyone their FAQs tomorrow. We have a, I have a set of them. And none of this has ever been an exact science.
And anybody who's uncomfortable not wearing their mask should continue to wear their mask and other people should be very respectful of people's decisions to continue to wear a mask if they're not comfortable unmasking.
And again, from now until May 29th, this has, this really only impacts outdoor activities. Okay, so ethics off, you are off the top.
Okay, um, so Pam wanted us to just give you a really brief rundown on what's happening at school, at each of our schools for the last few weeks of school. So I'm reading off my notes Pam, if it doesn't jive with your slide, I apologize. So we have our moving on ceremony for fifth graders. You know, some folks call it a graduation, not necessarily, but that's what people conjure up in their mind. That will be on June 14th at four o'clock. It will be out in the back of the school and, you know, obviously I've got to let folks know, we had originally told them masks, but we'll update that. It will be out back, we're setting up chairs and, and trying to find a way to make this meaningful for everybody, kids and parents, but we do have to make some adjustments to what we typically do. There'll be a rain date on June 15th at the same time at four o'clock. Hopefully it doesn't rain two days in a row because if that happens, it's probably going to get canceled because we, we're going to be plumb out of time. We have asked folks to RSVP so we can pre-register them and have a check-in at the gate. What we're doing, currently doing. Students and families will be seated six feet apart. We have given a maximum of six per, six guests per student. And people have been RSVPing, some are going up to the six, some are getting two or three. And that helps us know exactly how many chairs to set up, how far apart, all the logistical stuff. So that's the ceremony itself on the 14th, hopefully not the 15th. Field day. What we did is we are going to make June 14th a very special day for our fifth graders. So if you think their ceremony is at four o'clock, the whole day is going to be geared toward them at school. They're going to have their own private fifth grade field day. Not sure exactly how long, I could ballpark it at maybe an hour and a half to two hours, don't know, our PE teachers actively working on this. We'll have some sort of food for the fifth graders to make it a fun day. The slideshow that a parent works on that typically gets shown at the ceremony at night, the kids will watch during the day in a safe environment and then we'll send it home to the parents after the ceremony so that the parents can watch it with their children if they'd like to. And the K through four field day is scheduled for June 15th during the day. And they'll be going out by grade level for about an hour at a time. So in order to keep kids safe, they're going to have an hour just their grade outside with some adults. And Mr. March, who's doing a great job of planning this, unfortunately, parents cannot come to these events. It is way too complicated and I know that's a disappointment for folks, but, you know, we're taking it in stride, the fact that we can even do some of these things in a modified way. And then we're going to adjust those things if it rains as needed, which, oh gosh, I hope not, because that's going to be a lot of adjusting in a short period of time. But we will try to, I don't want to use that word pivot because it makes me want to, but we'll try to do that, that thing if we have to. June 10th, Joanne has set up a really nice visit for the fifth graders to go to the middle school from eight 45 to 10 45. They'll be headed over there and Joanne can speak to that if, if she's asked to in terms of how they're going to do this in a safe way. And I think I covered everything unless anybody has a question. John, you're up.
Okay, I think I'm up, yeah, thanks Pam. So kind of following a similar plan, we're going to try to implement all of our typical end of the year activities with some modifications, which, you know, obviously it's not the way we want these things to look, but it's kind of, you know, the, the position that we're in right now. And of course, you know, just to echo what Pam was saying, like everything is literally changing every day. On Monday, I think when I hit send for my email out to the fifth grade parents explaining that we were going to in fact be able to have something in person, but they would need to wear masks. I think that, that click of send was the start, starting button for the governor's press conference where he announced the no mask situation. So I, I've been a very popular man this week with the fifth grade parents, lots of communications back and forth. So I'm, I'm happy that we're able to move in this direction with, with the mask so we can kind of feel a little more normal at the, the crossing the bridge ceremony. So in terms of our field day, we're going to kind of keep watching the, the guidance that comes out from the state. But as it is right now, we're planning kind of a smaller group field day activities over the course of a week, just to kind of keep it manageable. And similar to what, what Jen said, you know, unfortunately it'll only be students and staff that are, that are partaking in field day. And then our physio teacher, Luke Borre is working with the PTO on some other potential fun ideas on, on field day. So just want to see if those things come to fruition before we announce. And then our traditional crossing the bridge ceremony will in fact take place in person outdoors on Highland Field. We're going to have Highland Field set up for fifth grade and eighth grade ceremony. So we'll kind of use the same setup for both, both events. Obviously the eighth grade will need, need more seats. Parents and families are RSVP, RSVPing right now. And, and, you know, we'll, we'll kind of check people in at the door as, as Jen mentioned. So again, unfortunately we have to modify the program a bit. So singing is, is really tricky outdoors with the distancing guidelines. When you space kids out 10 feet apart, the fourth and fifth row ends up being, you know, really far away. So we'll, we'll have to kind of modify that a bit. And typically we show a slideshow, we project a slideshow, but outdoors, that's just not, not possible. So we'll have to do that kind of more, again, to use some of these new slash hopefully old terms asynchronously for the families at home. The other big thing that's going on at Memorial that I think sometimes we all forget, including myself, try to forget sometimes is we have a huge move coming up. So we are half in the new building, half in the old building. So all of the staff members that are currently housed in the old building are working to kind of, well, we're mobilizing to start packing. So as soon as all the packing crates come, staff will start packing all of their things from the old building. So obviously June 16th is the last day of school. On June 17th, we have a moving truck coming to roll all of those crates onto the moving truck, take them to off-site storage because on June 18th, the next day, they're going to start abatement in the old building and demolition of the old building. However, the new, the new section of the new building won't be ready until the first week of August. So there's going to be kind of a weird period of time there at Memorial School from about, you know, June 17th, 18th until maybe August 7th or 8th in that neighborhood, where there really will be no kind of memorial school to go to. But then in the beginning of August, probably that first week to 10 days, the moving trucks will come back, move all of the things into the new building. And I just can't tell you how excited I am to be moving everybody, all the kids, all the families and all the staff into a, a beautiful new building with hopefully no masks and lots of tours. And, you know, it's funny, I talk to parents and they're like, oh, we don't even know what the inside of the building looks like, you know, the new building that we're in. So I'm really excited to be able to, you know, welcome them all, you know, kind of to, to our new home. One of the, the tricky things there will be from August to November, there'll still be site work going on. So the new drop-off off loop extension and that parking lot and the main playground will still be under construction, you know, some landscaping and that sort of thing through, I think maybe November, early December. And also the footbridge will be closed through kind of the middle of fall. So we're working with Saferoots to school to kind of redesign the traffic patterns, but it looks like next year, Brook Street Field and that whole path will be back in action. So that's going to alleviate a lot of the traffic that's been going over the footbridge anyway. So I think we should, we should be in good shape working around that. And then I think, you know, November, December will be, it'll be, you know, finalized, which is, is very exciting. So good things happening.
John, this is Ken, just a quick question for you.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm assuming because I know the construction will be going on, much like we have a wonderful crossing footbridge from Avia, I think probably from the first year you joined, the crossing lights, we've been talking about those placebo ancient crossing lights that kind of work a tenth. Hopefully those get addressed with Saferoots to school and all this. So we'll have either a nice crossing there at foot level or that kind of sealed up so we don't have people darting through the line and things. So I'm excited to see how that gets resolved.
Yeah, definitely. I think, I think one of the biggest improvements is going to be that kind of that, that extra drop-off loop area. So there hopefully will be far less cars backed up onto, onto Lincoln Street, which will help a lot. But yeah, that area needs to be buttoned up a bit too.
That'll be great, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I can't believe-
I can't believe that-
I can't believe that-
I can't believe that-
Through COVID and a building project at the same time. So kudos to you guys over there, that's crazy.
It's been interesting, thank you.
Yeah.
I think we're ready for the middle school.
I think we're ready for the middle school, if there are no-
Questions?
Questions?
Hi everybody. Can I just circle back around quickly to the recess mask issue? I just want to clarify that students are good, but my recess monitors, the adults need to keep their masks on, yes?
Sorry, I'm going back and forth between-
Sorry, I'm going back and forth between two-
Okay, I got it.
Two different mice.
If distancing cannot be maintained, I see it. Okay, I'll, I'll state that specific, those specifics to them. Great, I've got an email, I'm ready to hit send to let our folks know.
Send these up to you as well.
Okay, cool, this is great, exciting, I'm super happy about this. The kids need a break and this is going to be a nice one for them, so this is great news. Thank you everybody. Now on to fun and games, quite literally. Pam will, will put the slide up and I'll, but I'll just start. So the June 15th is, well, let me back, oh, I'll, I'll go with the slide and then we'll talk about move-up day. June 15th is the day of fun for our eighth graders. We will have a literal carnival set up on half of the football field for them to enjoy during the day. So carnival games, field games, carnival food.
Wait, I love, I can't hear Joanne anymore, can everybody else hear?
No, Joanne. Is that better? Do you have me now?
Yep, yep.
Hello? Okay, so carnival games, carnival activities, carnival food, we'll pie the principal and the dean. I'm sure there'll be a line of parents who would love to come participate in that one. So it's just going to be fun and light. The kids will spend the morning practicing for the ceremony and then the rest of the day will just be carnival time on the field and lots of fun. And then they'll go home, decompress, take a shower, get changed and come back to the field, field with their families to participate in the ceremony. As of now, we've got the six feet and, and, you know, mask requirements for adults. We'll see where things go between now and then, I think it's going to evolve. So we're ready. If we can't do anything, but, you know, if we can't change on a dime these days, we can never do it. So whatever happens, happens and we'll be ready to, ready to do what we need to do. So that's it in a nutshell, just a, a fun day. It's only a half day of school, but it'll be about two and a half to three hours with the carnival for the kids. They're probably going to be tired and ready to go home by then and then everybody will come back in the evening. The fifth grade move-up, as Jen mentioned, is on June 10th. It's a couple hours in the morning, the kids will come to the school, we'll have them set up in small groups and they, it's a small number of students anyway. So once we, they get into the middle school, their groups will be pretty, pretty small. They will rotate through classrooms to meet teachers, there will be student presentations, where they'll learn about all things middle school, there will be student-led tours around the building, we'll talk about summer reading, we'll talk about summer math. And then that evening, we'll give the kids time to get home and tell their parents everything that they learned that day. And then the parents will join myself and Kim Provo for a Zoom orientation, where, where we will go over all things middle school and have a Q and A session. So that is it for June and the middle school.
Any questions from the committee?
Any questions from the committee?
Cam, you have a weird-
Cam, you have a weird echo.
And I do too now.
And I do too now.
I don't know what that's all about.
That's all about.
I was trying to find the open mic and that's when I muted Joanne.
And that's when I muted Joanne.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't have any-
I don't have any questions.
But I'm very, it's-
Very excited.
These events that I'm gonna stop.
Do you want to come pie my, pie me in the face, Sarah? Fill up a pan with some whipped cream and let me have it.
That's a terrible waste of- That's a terrible waste of-
Whipped cream.
Not for me.
Okay, if there are no more questions, we can transition to just one last update and then I think we need to do the CPAC report. Just a reminder, filling in quickly, that-
Wait, can I just jump in for a sec while we have Joanne?
Sure.
I think we had some questions about lunch and eating outside and all of that. Does, how do these new, how does this new guidance change that? Or is, is-
The new guidance definitely opens, opens it up to kids eating outside because I no longer have to worry about them being in close contact with no masks on. So I could certainly offer that. I need to just pow-wow with my proctors to find out, you know, not to find out, but to plan the best supervision because we have four locations to monitor during lunch. And, you know, there are some students who won't want to go out to eat. They don't like, there's many students who don't ever want to go out. So I don't want to force any child to do something they don't want to do, particularly when there's a perfectly safe environment inside for them to eat lunch in. But I can certainly make it an option for kids who want to and I will strategize on appropriate supervision.
Thank you.
And my last note is just a reminder that next Tuesday night is not our typical meeting night, but we do have a workshop meeting, which will be open to the public. We're working on a live stream option and should have that ready hopefully by Thursday to publish for people. The strategic planning group has been meeting, we have our full feedback report from the survey of over 700 people in the focus group, I think we had close to 70 people. We'll be getting together tomorrow night to take a look at that. That will be coming to you ahead of the meeting, so you should anticipate seeing that by the end of the week. And then next Tuesday night, the workshop session will be the school committee, the leadership team and the steering committee, so quite a large group, just starting to puzzle through what some of our priority goals should be, whether the, the current stated mission vision and core values of the school are still appropriate language to use, or do they need to be revised? And then is the vision of the graduate language appropriate to help guide us in what we identify as our goals? So very interesting discussion coming up next Tuesday night for anyone who's interested. So that's really been an exciting process. And then one other public service announcement for this group, this should be the, I believe it's the 21st, ahead of Manchester Town Meeting, I think it's Monday, the 21st. We'll, we'll need to get together for about an hour from 4:30 to 5:30 to just process end of the year budget transfers and vouchers before the holiday kicks in for 4th of July. So I'll send you guys a, a hold for your calendars on that. So with that, if you have questions, happy to answer them. Otherwise, I think we can go back to the agenda and it would be the CPAC update.
Hi there, did we lose the principals? No, okay. Um, hello, so Christine, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay. On March 1st, our CPAC put out a survey for all of our parents about how things were going and what we were anticipating on returning to school. They had until the 12th to respond. We had 104 responses, which I believe was- which I believe was about 60% of the special education department, which was great because we normally do not get a lot of responses. Most of them, if we can scroll down, most of them came from elementary school parents. Some middle school, not as many high school. And scroll down one more. And it's just the breakdown. Okay, so we did a scale of one to six. How is your child doing this year academically? With one being in crisis and six being thriving. And we have the breakdown for some of these numbers. If you go one more down, Pam. So we can see the, oh, maybe it got cut off. There we go. So we can see the real breakdown of what it looked like and how many students we had falling below baseline in terms of academics. A good chunk of students according to parents. But I think all of these results could have been, you know, we'd anticipate that. We'd anticipate that special ed students would struggle remotely. The next slide. How was your child doing emotionally with school? And if we go down. Thirty, thirty-four percent better than expected, but we still need to look at the in crisis, worse than expected, below baseline numbers as well. But again, given the circumstances of the year, I think that it's, we did pretty good. Or the district did. Next. How is your child doing emotionally at home? I think we had more parents reporting that kids were struggling at home. And we heard a lot from parents in our meetings that kids were struggling at home. I don't think this is news to anybody. Going down. How is your child doing socially? Kids were struggling this year. For sure, socially. So if we go down one more. Again, the weighted averages are, you know, 3.4, 3.9. So they're, they're not as bad as I was worried they could be. But we definitely see, you know, 22% worse than expected, 2.9 in crisis, 30% below baseline. But I I think that we would probably have similar numbers among general ed. So if we can go down again in terms of physical health. For, you know, not all of not all of the special ed students are are athletes. Some are. And for those kids who don't participate in sports, I think they were more significantly impacted physically from this past year than kids that were able to participate in athletics and teams and sports. A lot of the other kinds of hobbies and clubs weren't, weren't always available. And then we asked what needs parents were anticipating when children transitioned back to full time. So we had a lot of parents talking about needing counseling services. You know, collectively, this was a traumatic year. We had parents requesting social skills groups to get kids needing some support back into group interaction and socializing. It, it, it did have an impact this, this year. And then our biggest was with organization, check ins, executive function type things that parents were feeling that their students were needing a lot of support with that. We had another section where parents could write in specifically what needs they felt that they their kids would, but it really fell in line with this counseling, social skills groups and organizational check ins. And that is our data for that. We had, what did we have? I think we've had 20 people attend meetings and 74% of people have not been able to attend meetings. But hopefully, starting in the fall, at the beginning of the year, we had a late start this year. Like kind of everything came a little bit later this year that we will get the word out and have more participation. Christine, do you have anything to add?
Um, no, just that I, I, I'm on the vision of the graduate committee and I noticed some crossovers of the long term things that people are concerned about, like organizational skills, executive functioning, et cetera, that came out in this survey as well. So it's just interesting. It was just an interesting thought that that I noticed.
So gen ed and special ed echoing the same things then?
Yeah, I, I think so.
Cheryl and Christine, what would you say? So this is a perception survey. It seems like you have people on both extremes and then a kind of a chunk in the middle with some, some reasonable concerns coming back to normal. What are your three big walkaways from this?
Um, how many students needed, would need counseling services? I think I anticipated more that they, they would need some support, you know, re, the reentry thing, reentering society like we're all kind of doing. And and organization was tough. It was tough in a remote setting. It was tough in a hybrid setting, keeping track of everything. And the drastic shifts, you know, two days on, two days off.
Yeah, I, I'd agree. A lot of it is the, the organizational of getting the kids back into their routines. And, and the, well, anxiety is probably the, the one word I keep hearing.
Yeah.
And so. Yeah, the underlying word for why they would want counseling and why they would want the social skills and why they would need the executive function. There's a lot of anxiety around all those issues.
So CPAC has the information. What will typically happen from here? Unfortunately, Allison will be at the June 1st meeting. She had a commitment tonight. She could not break to be here and kind of provide us what next steps might look like. But so CPAC took this on. You wanted to check in with your members to find out what, how they were doing. Where does it go from here?
Well, I believe. Oh, you, Christine, take it.
Well, from here, I think on one part of it as well in our meetings that we've had is we're coming up with a list of workshops that we can provide for parents and students. Through Zoom in particular, I mean, one of the, the upsides of the pandemic is there's so many presentations that used to be done in person and you would have to book them out. And now they're doing them on Zoom. And so like one CPAC will have an anxiety presentation done and every CPAC can go to it.
Right.
So it's sort of compiling those types of things of like, what do we need? And then working with Allison as well to see the trends and see what supports in school might need to be addressed as well.
And I think she's going to speak next week to some of the counseling services that she's already lining up for summer and into next year. So I, I do think they're going to dovetail quite nicely.
Yeah.
Um, but I love that you're doing the parent to parent support. That's fantastic.
Yeah, one thing that, you know, she said that that we were finding was that kids, so this was kind of sent out just as they were starting school before starting going back full time. And that probably if we did it now, some of these numbers might have increased a little bit, that there was kind of the reentry shock and that kids were struggling for a bit. But yeah, we do have some robust supports coming up for the summer, which is great.
Are there any other questions?
I, I, um, I don't think I have too many questions, but I just wanted to say thank you so much for putting this together and for all of your work this year. I think it's amazing that you've been able to get so much up and going during COVID. So I think that's great.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in school committee have questions for Cheryl and Christine?
I don't have a question. Just want to make a comment that this is really, really helpful and great information because it's something we've all been thinking about from the general ed side, too, to really quantify how people are feeling and, and to target where those resources need to go well ahead of time. So as, you know, we move to the fall, we kind of are thinking about where we need to put some of those resources. So thank you for doing that. That's, that's great.
Another thing that we were discussing and discussing how to do that, but is a similar type of survey, but actually parents asking their kids to answer so that we could hear it straight from them, what, what they feel, how they feel they need to be supported, what they are struggling with as opposed to just interpreting. And then going to be having in the fall. So hopefully, we're going to be having a lot more members. We're going to be having in the fall a picnic for all special ed 504 families at Tuck's Point and get kids together and families together and connect. Because above all, I think the biggest takeaway, Pam, back to your, your initial question that in terms of parents is how isolated they've come to feel over this. It's, it can be isolating being a special ed parent in general. But then when you have actual, you know, having to isolate, it's, it's, it's been a tough time. So we really, our main goal this year was kind of just to have a spot for, for parents to come to, kind of an outreach place and to connect. And next year, we really want to get moving with some more official business and things like that.
I wonder if anybody else on school committee has questions for Cheryl and Christine?
No, this is Ken. I just have a quick comment for Cheryl and Christine, just to say thank you very much for, for taking the initiative to, to energize CPAC, conduct the survey and really get this rolling in such a good way. It's, it's nice to hear the plans for the future in the fall and even something as mundane as a picnic, building a community and connecting the parents and the kids is going to be a great thing. So thank you.
Um, you guys had a picnic a few years ago at Tuck's Point and I was able to attend that event and it was wonderful and people were really making some good connections. Actually, I think that's where I met Christine.
Yes, it is.
So, um, thank you so much for doing that again. I think it's great. And I keep talking. Anyone else?
No, and you can all bookmark June 10th at Tuck's Point. We'll see you there.
No, June 10th is our meeting.
What?
June 10th is our last.
September 10th, September 10th.
Yeah.
September 10th is when the picnic is going to be. It's going to be a Friday afternoon and
and June 10th is our next CPAC meeting.
June 10th is the next, our final.
One thing I would like you guys to think about is we, we always try to have a better connection. I'm sorry. We try to have a better connection with CPAC and it's been great having you on the agenda and come to do, coming to do more reports. We'll do our reorganization at our next meeting. Are you interested in having a member of school committee come to your meetings on a regular basis or sometimes? Or a person to be sort of appointed as the liaison and then we can add that into our things we need to settle next week, next meeting?
Yes, you read our minds. We needed to ask, we wanted to ask to have somebody or be a liaison and come to meetings.
Okay.
It's once a month. The meetings are usually an hour. Zoom has been kind of working great for our parents. And we're also looking into a way to record our meetings so that more access for parents that, you know, may be busy in the evenings.
Maybe our technology people can help you guys with that. I think.
Okay. That would be great.
I believe we're looking for a new technology person right now. So hopefully that's a skill that we can.
Okay.
Our hurdle is actually for me, less technology and more that during the meetings, we have a lot of sharing from parents and I'm worried about privacy.
You maybe want to just like record the presentation part and then stop the recording and have conversation that's not recorded or something.
Yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're working on.
Yeah.
And we, we'd love to have those CPAC meetings posted on the district website.
Oh, great.
So people who, sometimes newer parents will be looking there for information and it's just, it's a way to get the word out.
Yeah, we, we definitely want to make ourselves better known for the fall. So.
Long term, we, we actually, you know, pre-COVID, our plan was to, for example, when you do like kindergarten screening and, and things like that, integrated preschool screenings, that we would have a presence there to just give like a card out. Because that's really, to me, the, the age group that the parents sort of go, I'm needing something and I don't know what it is. So that's sort of our long term and that this would be great for all of us to work on.
That's great. Awesome.
Yeah, good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you so much. I think we have some more things on our agenda we need to get to. So we'll let you guys go.
Sarah, the next two you could handle, just like the consent agenda, if there wasn't any concern or discussion about them. The, the district calendar will go through yet another revision. I got feedback already of a few things that they want to to update, little, little niggly things that just need to be cleaned up. But the body of it with the key dates, beginning, end, vacations, professional development dates are all locked in.
Okay, so we had that in our packets.
Yep, along with the school committee calendar.
Committee calendar. So does anybody have any changes that they want to make to the district calendar or the school committee calendar, knowing that this can always, well, knowing that the district calendar will definitely come back to us with revisions anyway. And the school committee calendar is usually a plan, but tends to shift a little bit as well.
I just want to make a comment about it since we're coming back to it later. I think something for us to all start thinking about, you know, you read through it, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, holiday recess. And then we see Columbus Day and I'm sure that most people know that in our country that, you know, for a lot of people in our country, that holiday has racist undertones, particularly for our Native First peoples and especially in our state. So I think that we should consider identifying that holiday on our calendar as Indigenous Peoples' Day. I do think it's part of a bigger conversation. But, you know, as a committee, we've already signed the MASC anti racism resolution and I think it's important to stand by that. You know, part of that bigger conversation is that it shouldn't just be a token gesture. It needs to be done in a way that's meaningful. It needs to be backed by, you know, age appropriate conversations in the classroom. But I do think that it's a change that we should be embracing and discussing as we move forward.
I agree with Kate. Does anybody else want to add to that, to Kate's comments?
Oh, this is Teresa. Sorry, I have a camera on, driving, but I'll share. And I'm not holding. and I'm not holding my phone. My daughter is. The thoughts that I shared about that today with Pam by email, which is that I think that that's something that fits in line, like Kate said, with our resolution adoption. Also, I think it's a good opportunity to um allow the students to lead out on this, especially the SCAR group. And if this is something that we are interested in considering as a district, that we could perhaps consider tasking the SCAR group with looking into that, deciding what would be sensible moving forward and perhaps presenting it to us so that this is more organically led from from the students who have identified this uh concern for us as well, so that it's a not just us making that decision, but that, you know, that this has backing from students and staff and administrators of the school and things. So that's my two cents on this.
I'm thinking maybe it would make sense to get uh this as an agenda item early in the fall, like as we're coming back to school and fall's rolling around and it's actually coming up. But I don't want to, I mean, I don't, I'm happy to talk about it anytime. But I think we could talk about
I just want to make sure that there's enough time for um classroom teachers to plan. You know, the conversations that are happening to frame this. I think, you know, that the words that we use matter and that when students have a day off, you know, they use the title of that day to sort of frame their thinking around, you know, who and what inspired that day off. And so I hope that we'll have enough time to have those important conversations. Um when do we go back? The the end of August?
We have a meeting in two weeks and then we have um we can talk about it at our retreat over the summer, perhaps. That would be a good time.
I I think it definitely merits discussion. And I I look forward to because as much of there's with the chain, as part of the anti racism, it's resolution we had, it's also discussing kind of where things like this fit within our curriculum and the community. Now, I guess I think it's I I think it's worth having the discussion. I almost would rather it be a broader one um for the schools and for the community and not necessarily just a small like just SCAR, which is definitely leading, but as but a subset. So yeah, I think that would be a good discussion possibly to start over the summer so that we don't we don't miss out and run it too late. So that's gonna happen.
You could kind of look at it as a two-tiered, right? So we're on the policy level of the school committee. So essentially, a name change would be a policy change. And then that would set in motion the other groups to implement the policy and all kind of all of the associated activities that would go with it. So if you take um Teresa's approach and say, okay, this is something the committee wants to do, SCAR, how can you help us implement this so it has some authenticity? And it actually echoes um, you know, the needs of the students of the conversation that wants to be had, and then you can kind of follow from there. So I think it's appropriate to start the conversation here in terms of labeling and naming, just like we we took on um the Good Friday conversation several years ago. And then we ask for the next group to come in and do some of the implementation. So you could bring it up on on June 1st. SCAR is supposed to be here. The students are supposed to be here with Craig. Just food for thought.
Thoughts? Should we consider um putting this on the agenda for discussion for our next meeting because SCAR will also be there and they could participate in the discussion and we could consider taking a vote then?
I like that idea.
Yep.
Okay. So let's put it on the agenda for our next meeting.
I think it is important to have this discussion publicly. I know there are comments, or there was, I shouldn't say comments, there's been feedback received from a number of things that is important as a community. We have the discussion and make decisions and move forward.
Agreed.
So thank you.
Agreed. Okay, but um so that aside, should we have um a motion to approve the dates on the twenty one, twenty two district calendar and that fiscal year twenty two school committee calendar? And just approve those?
But this is subject to a few revisions still.
True.
Okay.
Pam, do you still want us to vote on subject to revisions calendar?
You're on mute. You're muted, Pam.
Always. It's it's like the trimester dates, the terms, they're really niggly little things that impact parent planning less, but just organization of the year more.
Okay, so let's vote to let's um maybe somebody would like to make a motion to approve the calendar that we have so far, which is the main dates and vacations and start dates and things like that.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Per second.
Okay, so this motion is to approve both the district calendar and the proposed school committee calendar. Just, okay, so um Eric?
Yep.
Shannon? Yes, Matt?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And I didn't accidentally say Annie's name that time. Okay, so we're ready for Essex Playground.
Uh and Pam, do you want me to kick off with a quick update? And um I'm happy to do that. I know Ken's been working with the working group too. And I believe I I see Jess Yarowicz is on the line. I don't know if Jake Foster is going to be here.
I saw Jake too.
And we may or may not have Jason Waldron, um who I know was going to attempt to join us. But either way, Jason and I have been working pretty closely, so I'm happy to provide a quick uh background or update on what's going on with the project. And I know um people probably saw some of the items in the vouchers. So um anything you want to start off with, Pam, before I just hop into quick?
No, go right ahead.
So um just in terms of um what's happening with the project, I know there's some slides that we'll put up in a second that show some great progress. And I don't want to, I don't want to take away from Jake and Jess, who are going to present these. So let me just say that um the project is moving along very well. Uh and what the phase we're in now is continuing to do the site work that has to happen prior to putting in the port in place solution, which is the surfacing. And so we're going through that process. This is where you kind of, you know, the famous line that you hear about with construction, if you're on the school building committee meetings, you hear this all the time is that once you start getting into the dirt, that's where you start to see the things that X-ray vision doesn't always allow you to know. Uh and so um you know, we're working through that with the site contractor and um what does that entail? Well, you know, we're going through things like what is the, uh how much soil is there versus how much chips are there from before versus how much, you know, uh stone, where's their ledge, where's their water, those types of things. The the project is still moving along great, but you know, we are having to adapt a little bit on the site planning work for things like um a little bit more water on the site than we expected. We know that there's water in the area because we've talked about, you know, the Essex soccer field, for example. We've talked about some of the scoping. And so those are some of the things that are going to turn into some potential change orders on the site contract, which started with the base price of thirty thousand. We're still kind of in the budget range of, you know, with the three hundred for the equipment and we had a total project cost of three hundred to three fifty. To hit that, it's, you know, we're gonna potentially be bumping up on the higher end um of that range with the site work. But uh we're kind of working through issues now in addition to water about um to uh make sure we uh take care of the any of the infill that we remove and whether it can be used uh for some of the landscaping as like firms, et cetera, or whether it it's going to end up needing to go offsite or to perimeter areas. So those are some of the things we're working on. And as we kind of go through some of those solutions, I think that those will impact the timeline. When you look at the structure, you can tell that we're really far along. And if you're at Essex Town Meeting, it was a great view. In terms of the overall, you know, date for it to be opened, I think our original plan, as we've been talking about uh of late May, early June, it is starting to look, you know, probably closer to June. It's it's too early to say. But we want to really finish up some of our uh final solutions on site work before we can really have a firm date. And you know, we're hoping we'll get that done prior to students leaving. But um we're still working through some of the details. So I would just say as we continue to have updates for school committee, um you know, Jason or I can provide more specifics. But big picture, it's going very well. Um we're dealing with some of the details, but they're important details that we need to get ready. So with that said, um I think we can kick it off um to either Jess or Jake, who want to um come here. Just as a quick introduction, everyone remembers they're a part of our working group. Ken Warnock was also part of it, as well as a couple of, as well as a couple of community members from Essex, where we worked about picking the design for the equipment, which went great. And then also about uh potential site solutions, once everything is done and installed to enhance um things like where do people sit? Will there be shade options um and pathways, et cetera, as well as an overall you know, thought towards how the site might be accessed and approached from people, both at school and also in the community. So uh without further ado, uh I'll introduce them. And I think we talked about the concept of if there is such a plan, how does it get funded? Um and I think um Jess and Jake will be able to talk to that. And I'm happy to fill in any details.
Thank you, Avi. Uh good evening, all. Uh so as Avi noted, uh very exciting to see it go up. Um I've just got a couple of images here and and as I talk and go through the next couple of slides too. Uh these were taken last Thursday and Friday. Uh so I think even a little more work has been done and a lot of people got a good view of it on the um at the town meeting. Super excited this this in accomplishes part of our intent here of evoking the um feeling and experience of the Eagle's Nest. Uh you know, the wood, the wood option and the variety uh that the structure allows us students to engage in. Uh when, you know, uh Jason arranged a visit for the working group on last Thursday morning, there was still a lot of water in the holes and, you know, we um as as Avi mentioned, and you know, the contractor had nothing but good things to say about the wood and its and its ability to hold up to that site condition and and the ease of maintenance and that kind of thing. So great to see it in in progress here. I'm excited to have kids play on it very soon. So our our goal all along has been to provide a dynamic area and structure for a variety of play opportunities. That's both on the structures itself and the surrounding play space. Because as as you know, anybody who's been there when kids are playing, the structure is one aspect of how kids play in this area. Uh and so we wanted to, you know, from the start, even as we uh were interviewing Conpan and others, we were asking, you know, let's contextualize this structure uh in in its context of the hot top, the grassy area and the surrounding uh play space. And it's always been, you know, a a goal to have the community involvement as part of this. That was a key element of Eagle's Nest itself and a a strong uh message that we went into this uh process with and and heard input on as we were getting uh thoughts from the community as we started this. Obviously, COVID has has rearranged our plans for that aspect of it, but we've always wanted some element uh to to allow the community to be involved in its development. Next. I'm going to ask Jess to uh do a brief overview of the concept design. This is from March. We have not updated it since then. We wanted to see how the site was actually playing out through the construction and whatnot. Uh so there are, there are some edits that are planned here. Um but the basic concept still holds and I'll ask Jess to do a quick quick overview.
Hi, everybody. Um many of you have seen this design already. I just want to say that it was done with the help of um Cass, who's a parent for Essex Elementary School and also a landscape architect and also um other members of our community had some say in it. So the first thing that you'll notice is that the structure is this sort of green area and there are multiple connectors from the structure to the blacktop. Those are really necessary for adequate access to and from the structure, particularly for young people who are in mobility devices. Um one of the limitations for the Old Eagle's Nest was that it had only one path. And if you were in a mobility device, it's difficult for to traverse that um that length of space, especially if kids were coming at you. It's like a sort of salmon upstream kind of thing. So the inner circle will now allow for um easier mobility to and from the structure. And it also attaches those inner pathways attached to two seating areas for adults or for tired kids. And also the potential for shade. You might notice that there are trees along the two pathways. You can see the sort of the outline of them along the sides. The outer ring was designed to connect the entire space and hold um to hold this space for both kids and adults by creating a pathway that people could walk around or even um bike in a very, like a little kid's bike. And it was intended to connect both the blacktop and the soccer field and also put the the space above the playground, which is near those that tree line into action as well to make that a useful space. And it um that bigger loop connects an additional uh seating area that's associated with the little houses. You may have noticed when Jake was showing the slides that there are three little playhouses. This seating area, which on your, on this image is sort of towards the bottom, that seating area actually attaches to the um those three little houses, expanding the play uh opportunities in that area. So that's sort of our rationale for these two large, the large circle and the um the inner circle. It really expands the entire uh play opportunities. Sorry.
Thank you, Jess. So uh I'm going to stay on this for a moment here and and just kind of lay out uh what Conpan is working towards and what we are asking for your assistance in finishing. Uh so first of all, that inner loop um as envisioned uh really is not uh possible, both from your uh input and from the um perspective of the port in place. We originally had that loop uh coming around the main structure there on the green, the dark green port in place and and for cost reasons, that's not possible. Uh and so and we also heard your feedback that the inner circle doesn't necessarily work from your perspective. So we don't necessarily, we aren't planning to paint that uh top part of the loop. But the pathways are uh still important, particularly uh you know, for the access per perspective, but also um to connect the Gaga pit uh to the rest of the structures there, which is part of the reason for curving that around closer to the Gaga pit. So what Conpan is working on is everything in the dark green. That includes the compound structures, the port in place material and all the underlying uh, you know, rock and and earthwork that has to be done that Avi was referring to. And uh as part of that scope of work, um Jason has arranged also for the pads for those um seating areas between the Gaga pit um or close to the Gaga pit and uh, you know, closer to the hot top, uh but still adjacent to the dark green port in place, that those pads would be uh made uh feasible uh for for seating to be arranged there. The seating on the bottom side that Jess was referring to in terms of the um uh adjacent to the houses there on the tree line at at the very bottom of the image. Um that is not part of the Conpan scope of work. And that is in part because there's a slope there that now that we know kind of how the the playground is is actually sitting in the space. Um and we now have a better sense of the water coming off of that slope that now we can actually sit down and figure out what that design actually looks like. So in concept, you know, that's that works nicely. In design, we need to account for that slope and the water there. And part of our discussion on the Thursday site visit was the potential of that outer ring pathway being a potential solution to help the drainage issues. Because that water is coming off the slope from the tree line right down into the playground site. And uh crushed rock underneath that pathway could help divert water around the playground site. And crushed rock underneath that pathway could help divert water around the playground site. So those are, those are the kind of things that now that we know what the site looks like, we'll, we'll be engaged in. Also the, the seating along the pathway, the shrubbery and, and the trees, those are the, those are the things that we need to work out the details of. So Pam, if you can go to the next slide. I think I basically just said all this. What we're asking for help with is that excavation of the paths, the benches and tables themselves and the shrubbery and shade. Next slide. This is a very rough estimate based on that concept design that Cass helped with in terms of if you were paying straight up, you know, for full, full services, full materials, what, what that additional work might cost. I can't say whether or not this is on the high or low side, but you know, and it's, and it is a rough estimate based on that March concept design. Next. We do think that if you all are supportive of these strategies that we can accomplish all that for no extra cost to the district through three different strategies. One is that the PTO, as we've discussed before, has a long-held Eagles Nest maintenance funds of about $35,000. They, as a PTO board have recently supported, taken a vote to support the use of these funds for this purpose. If you're supportive of that. We've also always intended to ask the community for help. That's part of that community involvement goal that we've, we set early on. And we think that can be done through either straight up materials donations and/or donation of labor. And that labor, as it's played out over time, kind of falls into two categories, you know, those who have, you know, a business or a contractor kind of role. That kind of work, like, you know, putting down the crushed stone, doing the excavation that might be needed for that back seating area. You know, those kinds of things would be coordinated through the district in a similar way that was done for the tear down and cleanup of, of the Eagles Nest. And then the community member volunteer work, you know, for light duty items. You know, that can be, that can be coordinated through, through events with the districts and, and, you know, and be involved in that planning to put in things like the shrubs and the assembling benches or, you know, doing the kind of, you know, grass seed and stuff wherever we may work in that regard. Next slide. Jess already mentioned some of these. We do feel that there are some significant impacts. If we are not able to do this, one is the access issue, particularly given the water on the site. And, and we think that there is that potential of using that back portion of the, of the larger circle pathway as, as a way to help address that. Right now there would be one, you know, the one friendship bench is the only place to, the existing friendship bench is the only place to sit out there for adults or if students need to take a break. And you all know how kind of hot it gets out there and, and I don't know what it'll be like with the port in place, but that will be a different surface than woodchips. And that could be a, a potential factor for kids playing out there in warm weather. Next. So our continuing question for you, which I know you've been working through a little bit on the policy side. And we hope to, to get some support here from you around what types of contributions we can accept. Can we accept the, as a district, the PTO's maintenance funds for this purpose? We feel quite confident that we can get at least half of that estimated cost donated either in materials or, or, or labor in, in various sorts. So we feel that that $35,000 would, would, with donated materials, if that's possible, would make this doable without any extra budget from the district itself. The materials donation is one category and then this donation of labor is the other category. Happy to take any questions, but I think that's it for our overview.
I just want to thank Jess and Jake. I mean, they've been involved with this project for a very long time, as well as the whole group, including Cass, who has become kind of a de facto advisor of, of the group. And Jason, who's kind of quarterbacking the process. It's been great to bounce ideas back and forth. And I think they've been very understanding of some of the unique constraints that we have, but yet still continuing to find creative ways to get to those same end goals that, that Jake and Jess talked about at the earlier parts. I just want to thank them for that amazing spirit of collaboration. Cause we've had a lot of conversations about how to get to where we're at today. So thank you. The other thing I just want to point out for school committee is that as we said, we did talk about the concept about whether this could be a zero cost addition. I think it's nice to see that being addressed head on. And then the last item, just ensuring that, you know, for logistical and operations purpose, and just also because of you know, ultimate responsibility for upkeep and care, that it's really important that whatever work we do or whatever project management we do has to run through the district, which essentially falls on Jason Waldron's shoulders. Who's just done a phenomenal, phenomenal job, both of managing the project so far, but also including the folks on the working group. And I, you know, seeing the coordination of contractors and volunteers through the district is another thing that we had asked this presentation to address. So I just was very happy to see that. So I just want to thank again, Jess and Jake for kind of addressing some of the things that we were looking for from an administrative and operational standpoint.
Me too. And I just want to point out that I was chattering away thanking Jake and Jess, but Avi interrupted me, but then I realized that I was on mute. So echoing what Avi said, and then let's open it up to school committee questions.
I wanted to just observe and talk with Avi at Essex Town Meeting that I was very grateful on the community and the effort goes Jesse Palm, Carol Mandela, everybody that's been involved as the working group has gone on from, from the district have been, have been fantastic. And I was observing to Avi that if anything, what we think of as a relatively small playground project, there's a lot of complexity to it and it really makes us appreciate the professional health that we have at the Memorial School project throughout. Not that anybody, and this is going swimmingly smooth, Kanpan, everybody is, has been incredibly positive, but it's a huge amount of work. So I'm also really grateful that perspective this has given me on the overall MRSD or the Memorial School. But thank you. I, I would, I'm not quite sure where we stand in the donations policy. My understanding is that, that PTO fund has existed from actually before the district was, was regionalized. And I don't know if we, how we would do this. Would it be with a vote or would we visit the current school committee policy? I'm not quite sure. Our next steps.
I don't think, and let's just finish hearing questions from school committee and comments. And then I think we have a plan. Anyone else on school committee care to comment or question?
I just want to say thank you guys so much. My kids were swarming around me while you were showing the pictures of the playground. They are so, so excited to see it coming together. And they cannot wait to get their little bodies spinning and climbing and running and jumping on it. It looks awesome.
I remember when your son came to ask for a new playground a year ago. So amazing. And I can't believe you guys have gotten all this done during COVID. Teresa just texted me, can you not hear me? Teresa, we cannot hear you. Do you have something you want to say? I don't know what to tell you.
Is she on a phone line?
She is, she is on a phone line.
Do we know her number?
Yes, hold on.
Not her phone number, what caller? We don't need to.
I don't know what caller. She's, she's probably one of the early ones because.
Oh, she's right there. There she is. She's, mic is open.
Teresa, go ahead. No.
No, it's not registering anything.
We still can't hear you, Teresa.
See, you're.
You can also probably hit the three dots at the bottom of the page and switch your audio connection, which you might be working on.
Now she's calling me on the phone. Hi Teresa. Okay, I'm going to quit. Can you hear Teresa if she talks on my thing?
Can you hear me now? This is so obnoxious. Okay, I'm going to mute mine then. You can hear me. Sorry guys, but I actually have real questions about this. So thank you so much. I have a question that's going to tie into the situation with the donation policy, but it's not directly related. So I, I have some concerns about, first of all, I appreciate all of the work all along, but I do have some concerns about the way this is being presented. It's being presented as if it's not going to be a finished project unless we do these other things. And my understanding was that what we're talking about is a presentation for beautification and enhancement and looking at donations for that, but that the Kanpan plan in and of itself that we first approved and approved the budget for and all of that, and that the district moved forward with is a complete plan with appropriate access. And that sort of thing. So I was wondering if Avi could speak to that a little bit. I know these have gone hand in hand in terms of like wants and needs and that sort of thing. But my understanding is that if we don't do anything extra, this is still a complete park and a really beautiful big deal. And so can you speak to that a little bit so that I can then know about my second question, Avi?
Sure. I can keep the comments very brief, which is just to say the site will be fully compliant with ADA and in dealing with issues like water, which were brought up as things that could be benefits of this plan extension, you know, our goal is to have, as Teresa said, a fully complete site that will meet all the requirements, both for ADA access, which it will, as well as for making sure that we're addressing the stability of structure and water and drainage, et cetera. Having said that, could these items add to that and make them better? You know, more accesses, you know, more accesses is, is more than one. So that that's a potential benefit and say additions might help drainage beyond the site footprint. So much the better. That would be, you know, potential benefits. I don't want to discount those. So I think the answer is yes to Teresa. It is designed to be completely contained and these would be potential additional benefits.
Okay. So just a request perhaps with, for Jake and Jess, as we move forward in discussions on this, that we could maybe be careful on the language you're using because again, this is going to impact the situation with accepting donations. If we're accepting donations to finish a project of the districts, that's a little bit different in my mind than accepting donations for beautification and enhancement. And I think it does have impact down the line.
Can I, can I, could I comment on that? From the working group perspective, it has never been our perspective that this is beautification and enhancement. This is part of the project from the perspective of the working group. Because of the way the relationship with Kanpan has worked out, the way that COVID has impacted the process, these have become separated in the process, but that was never the intent and we do not view it in that way.
I appreciate that, but that's what we voted on too. So I guess I'm trying to wrap this around my head in my mind too. But again, looking forward with the distinctions with donations and things like that, I need to know that what we're providing for a $30,000 base moving forward was a complete solution to begin with, and that now we're looking at enhancement. But you don't agree with that assessment?
No, because I would believe that a playground should include seating, garbage disposal, pathways. The only pathway to and from the structure right now is going to be that concrete path, which you can sort of see highlighted. That's it. It's one, and it doesn't connect to the Gaga pit at all. So what was approved by school committee originally was the structure and the pip. That's it. There's no seating, no garbage disposal, no garbage, garbage containers, no additional pathways, no plantings, trees, shade, nothing. So.
We discussed it in the meeting though, maybe in February or March. I thought we discussed that, that if that were the case, that you know, if we didn't do anything else moving forward, there would be garbage cans and seating and, and that sort of thing. Avi's nodding his head. So I'm, I know I'm not losing my mind. I remember that.
Yeah, I don't know. Like I understand the words here are very important. The, the bottom line is if this doesn't move forward, we have to address trash disposal. We have to address ADA access, ADA access. We have to address drainage and all those things. That doesn't preclude us from moving forward with this plan because it could provide additional benefits and I think this design is clearly more robust than what we would do without that. And I think so, you know, kind of hear both sides on this, but we absolutely would not leave the site without those items. But I think clearly what you're looking at here is a, is a, is a much more proactive design to really think about as Jess and Jake talked about how to integrate the site together.
I guess I'd just also add, Avi, that.
It's Ken's turn now. Sorry. Ken's talking now.
I, I was just going to also add, one of the things I think we wanted to get back to was, and I can't remember, but I believe the old design, part of the goal is to at least replace with functional equivalent. I think the old design did have some of the benches back there and the trash and the rest. So although I can't remember, that was part of my expectation as well, that we, we wouldn't downgrade the facilities as a result.
Okay.
Can I just get, I'm sorry, Sarah, can I get a point of clarification?
Yes.
The Kanpan design is ADA accessible. Okay. Cause the, the last statement was that we, we need to seek ADA accessibility with this next phase. That was a misstatement. Correct?
I just, I'm just clarifying what I heard that joins everyone together. I think what we heard in the presentation here is that this provides additional access and that could be a benefit for ADA compliance, but it's not needed for ADA compliance and we will deliver a fully accessible site. This, you know, this might have three or four approaches to the site versus the main ADA available option that's going to come when, when Jason finishes the work with Kanpan.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Teresa?
I am. Thank you. And I'm not arguing against this. I'm just trying to think forward about how, how we categorize these different things. That's all.
Okay. I'm going to hang you up now and talk a little bit. Okay. Okay. Hold on. So I, I think that the, and Teresa can call me back and correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's just as we move forward, we want to make sure that we're not, that we're not setting future school committees up to be in a situation where they're approving things that are three quarters finished or half finished. And I think we just want to be really careful that technically this would be an adequate playground, were it not to be finished, finished with the plan that you have so beautifully presented. So I understand that there's an, I'm not going to use the, I have no words left this late at night, but I, I understand that there's a, a vision and we really want to complete the vision. But that it would technically be an playground, were it not to be enhanced. So moving forward, what do you need from us to just approve what they're asking for us tonight?
You just need to approve the design. The scope of the work and the budget.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the design, the scope of the work and the budget?
I'll make that motion, Shannon.
Shannon, so moves.
Second, Warnock.
Okay, Eric?
Yeah.
I made a clarification. I'm sorry, Sarah. In terms of approving the budget, I think I just want to clarify that this is an estimated budget, but what I think we're approving is the ability, and correct me if I'm wrong, to accept donations for the site, for the site plan as proposed and budget as proposed with the understanding that it would be zero cost of the district and managed by the district, which allows us, finishing that motion concept, allows us to understand that as the, the budget and design might need to change. First, I think you could decide whether it comes back for revisions. But either way, if it's agreed to be covered in full by donations, whether it's 64 or 68,000 or whatever, I don't think we, I don't know if we need to get hung up on that tonight, although school committee might feel like that is important. So I just want to clarify the difference from our standpoint. I think we agreed prior to this meeting that we could not commit additional funds. And so I'm wondering if we want a motion that approves this site design and draft budget, provided that it comes fully funded by outside sources and is managed by the district operational team.
Shannon, are you okay to? Shannon, are you okay to amend your motion to what Avi said?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Avi, for clarifying.
Okay, is there a second?
I think Ken was the second.
Warnock's second.
And he's still seconding. Eric?
Yeah.
Oh. Teresa says that she thinks that we should also be careful to make sure we don't begin until the donations are all committed. But we can, so we're having discussion. We had a motion and a second, and now we're discussing it. So I think that's what we're saying. Oh, well, we're saying that we're not going to spend any more, we can't spend any more money. The district can't spend any morning, more money. We already have $34,000 of committed donations. So do we want to say that the work needs to be, not start until the donations have all been committed?
I don't know that we need to say that because I think once we say that the district is not paying for any more, then that puts the onus on the donors, the word I couldn't come up with. The donors on that. And I don't know that they can line all of the funding up ahead of time. I mean, maybe they're waiting for people to help them with labor. And that, that may be putting too much sort of restriction on that.
I think there's a little bit of concern. And I was having a little bit of this concern too, and then it was allayed. So I think the concern is that I've lived in Essex for about 10 years now, and I know how things go. And I do get a little concerned that people are going to be confused about what their roles are, and somebody's gonna come in and say they're gonna dig the path, and then somebody's gonna say they're gonna donate the gravel, but that it's not gonna show up for three weeks, and then somebody's gonna wanna plant some plants, and then somebody's just gonna show up on a Saturday and plant a tree or whatever. But my fears were allayed because Jason will be managing the project. So I feel better about that now.
To operationalize that, what would happen if we, you know, you might want to amend the motion. I know it's wordy, because I gave it, and I give wordy explanations to everything. But you might want to amend it to just say that with project initiation to be subject to either A, the district operational team to, you know, feel like it has the pieces in place, or B, school committee getting a final plan and final understanding of donations. And I'm open to either. But either way, I agree, we need, you know, part of the next step is to get all the pieces in place. And I would imagine that the working group would certainly agree. You know, we don't want to thwart the progress, but we also need to make sure we've got the important pieces buttoned down before we kind of initiate something that could take longer than we expect or cost more than we expect, or lead people who want to be really generous donors to be disappointed. We certainly want to, we want to under-promise and over-deliver.
I like that, but can we do the version where it's Jason, it goes through Jason, not where we have to sit down again and meet? Because I think that that will just be a lot more efficient.
We'll refer to that as the district operations team for the purpose of a motion. But yes, it will be Jason.
The district.
Working with me, thank you. And, oh, Jason, are you here? I know I've been talking over and.
He was here for a while.
Okay, sorry.
No, I'm here, guys. You're doing a great job. Avi, thank you. I had some audio troubles earlier, but, no, yeah, I'm here.
Is there anything we're missing before we move forward, Jason? I'm sorry to open.
No, no, no. I would have spoken up earlier, but, no, thank you, Avi, Jess and Jake. Thank you very much. You know, we're handling the project as best we can. As Avi mentioned, you know, some things have been kind of unforeseen, but we're handling them. And, you know, every day I see those kids' faces. So, you know, we know why we're doing it, right? So it's been great. And again, looking forward to working with, you know, any of the donations, volunteers to kind of make this playground complete.
Okay, thank you so much, Jason.
No problem at all.
More discussion about the motion on the table. Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Teresa, can you say yes? Wait, let's see if I can see Teresa. She like, can you give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down? No, she's saying no. Okay, well, Teresa's gonna, Teresa's calling. Yes, Teresa. Are you a yes or a no? Oh, could we, could somebody please repeat the amended motion, the whole thing? Avi, do you have all that in your head now?
I was gonna say. I have a course stenographer. I'll defer to them. Is there one online? If not, I can do my best to recreate it. It would be, yeah, is Gail on the line?
I don't think so. Can you do your best to recreate it?
It would be a motion to accept the plan of the working group as presented to move forward with a project that will be at zero cost to the district, funded through donations with operational management run by MERSD through the operations department and with project work not to be initiated until such time as the district is able to evaluate all incoming and validate all incoming source of funds.
Okay, Teresa, are you a yay or a nay? She said yay. I just didn't have the speaker on. Say it again. Say it loud. Oh, she hung up. Okay, so she's a yay, and I'm a yes, and that means that it passes unanimously, which is lovely. So awesome job, everybody, especially Playground Crew. Thank you so much for all of your hard work on this. It looks amazing. It's gonna be unbelievable. Our kids are really lucky to have you working in our community to make sure that they have an amazing new playground, so thank you.
Well, thank you for your patience and support all. Thank you so much. Looking forward to doing this next portion of it.
A hundred percent, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. I believe that's the end of our business tonight.
It is.
Is there any school committee comment?
Yes, I'd like to make a quick comment. Last comment, as a matter of fact. I just wanted to thank all of you guys. Wow, eight years. It's been a long time. And I just wanted to say that I have so thoroughly enjoyed serving on all of the committee last eight years with all of you. Linda, Alva, Julie, Rachel, Caroline, who aren't here, but I've served with as well. And Pam and Avi, you guys are incredible leaders. You are the most incredible nimble problem solvers I think I have ever come across. You're always willing to look at things in an innovative sort of novel way. You find your way out of everything. Your leadership has been tremendous, especially this year. I mean, talk about going out with a bang. Holy cow. You know, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, and it's been a tremendously rewarding experience. People say, oh, my God, thank you. You serve on school committee. You're doing the work of God. But you know, it's really, it's, I've thoroughly enjoyed it. If I didn't, I wouldn't have done it. So the district has done an amazing job. My kids are very happy, and they've done very well, and they will continue to do well. I've got a senior who's going to his first choice, got an early decision to his first choice college. And that's huge, and that's due to the district. I mean, the, I'm just gonna say it's been a stellar, stellar experience. So thank you both, and I will miss working with all of you guys in sort of a quasi-professional manner. But you guys all know where to find me, so thank you all. I appreciate it.
Shannon, we will miss you too a lot. I have to ask a question through Teresa, is asking a question through me. Pam, apparently there have been rumors that summer school is gonna be mandated for all the elementary school children, and they're very upset about it. Can you clarify any rumors that are going around about that?
And the rumor is we're mandating summer school for all children?
I don't, apparently something about mandating summer school.
I have no idea.
Oh, it was middle high school. It was a middle high school, summer school mandate.
Not unless we want to increase our budget.
Okay. So we are.
I'm kidding. No, I have no idea where that's coming from. I'm happy to look into it. What we have going on for the summer is the teamed effort with the Y, and it's targeting elementary students.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
And it's voluntary, voluntary.
I mean, I guess they're, okay, great, awesome. Thank you for clearing that up. Any other school committee comment?
I want to thank, I want to close by thanking Shannon for her time on the committee and also point out that I've noticed that I think Annie Cameron has disappeared from the participant list. So Shannon, you truly have the last, will have the last word. And while we hope to see you again in the future, may you also follow Annie's example and not make it up, make it to the end on every meeting.
So with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll favor we have to do by roll call. Eric?
Yes.
Shannon?
Shannon.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Matt?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Teresa? Is it yes? Me, yes. Thanks, everybody.
Be well.
Bye, thank you, Shannon.